We will open the meeting. Late tonight. I guess for the time being. One of the only table, the first now. We can handle that a little later this evening. So move on to the second item on the agenda for tonight. 137 Shrewsbury Street is Mr. Fuller.
Yes, I am.
How far forward? This is? What's that? What do you have to say?
Is there a decision?
Amended site land. Are you just admitting amended lands right now?
Yes, basically. I'll just try and quiet.
Well, you can dispose your...
Well, I can, correct. I work for the DCR, so I can't go out on this, so I'm gonna try and quiet during my presentation.
Well, we'd like to have him stay so we can maintain our form. And I mean, no decisions or no conflict yet, but maybe he'll conflict. The floor issues.
Well, basically, I came here in February for the change of usage. That got approved. Came in, turned in the drawings, and there was a huge miscommunication. Basically, I dropped off all of my information to Bentley, the building contractor, just because he was here for our meetings. So I dropped everything off to him, just assuming that that's all I needed to do. And we find out, and we know forward to make the part where it's previous, and I always say that nobody knows what's going on, and it kind of hit me blindsided because we're pouring foundations actually, so.
Awesome.
So the plans are all here. They were...
Bentley had them before.
So the drainage calculations, I believe I forwarded all of the site plans. I have a building permit issued for 58,000 square foot facility that we have posted outside.
He's already issued?
Yeah. So, and I spoke with Wayne. He said that he just wanted to see drainage.
Did he get a chance to look at it before?
He told me he was gonna be here, to be honest with you, so I don't know. I emailed to him. I emailed him all the calculations, like the infiltration system.
Did you review them?
I know Wayne has, he has all the calculations he has. He has the, I emailed him everything, plans, the building permit, the footings, the foundation, drawings.
And that's next week, your form?
Yes. The infiltration's going in tomorrow, actually.
Well, let's hope they're good.
So...
We have to give Wayne some time, but...
Yeah. So Wayne just got these things, I don't know, middle of last week, I think it was. Right. And so I know that he obviously understands the urgency of the situation. I think he just wants us to follow up with him as to timing, as to fees for the review of the drainage and all of that.
Okay. I mean, tonight, we're kind of taking in the amended site plan, we'll have a review. Kind of, I don't know, what do you want to do next week, about two weeks?
Yeah, I mean, it'll be, Wayne's certainly aware that this is, you know...
There's a timing issue.
Yeah. Of the time, and I think you saw it too, as well, right? Yeah, I really don't want to bury anything, though, in that.
Right.
But like I said, I thought that everybody, I mean, I've come into just into Bentley's office at least half a dozen times, just, "Am I okay? You sure?" Because this has been a lot of money spent so far.
Right, and it's gonna be worshiped.
I'll change the standard with building permit in hand.
Yeah, no, I mean, I understand the dilemma, I just, I don't want...
Realize that this connection was so large. The building's got a lot of... If it's any, Brian Muschetti, engineer record, Mckay Engineering. If it's any consolation or comfort factor here, this is the same drainage system pond that we designed as up the street at 70 Hartwell. You know, we worked with, with Miko and DHP in that design, so I'm more than, more than available to talk to, comfortable with the design, to talk with Wayne, to work through this, you know, to help him understand if they agree with what we did.
I'm not, I'm not thinking that there's gonna be any problem, I'm just worried that, you know, we're just a cart before the horse, I think.
Yeah, yeah. In the time issues, you can't, contractors stand on to it, it's just a broken job.
Right, and then you're out for two weeks or something.
Major, major deal. And from the engineering side, I mean, until we hear back from our engineer, do you feel confident that what you submitted as best... Absolutely. I put my stamp on the planes and I see...
And the methodology was similar enough to hell, Wayne's comfortable?
Yes.
I know that, that, oh, that whole review went very smoothly, so...
It did, and we, because it just got approved in January. You know, this followed right after. I literally, it was the first project I'd been permitted with West Pointe. I used my drainage template exactly. It was head for head that I did that Wayne acquired for the other projects, so it should be more than adequate for his six. And like I said, I'm more than happy to follow up with him, you know, day after day after day, until, until he's comfortable.
Do you know, just going to...
Before the next meeting. Uh, he couldn't commit, he knows it's urgent, he's just trying to squeeze it in, is what he told me, but he didn't have a deadline, I can have a...
But he's not on vacation or anything like that?
He did mention, I think, that he did have somebody that he could pull onto it, I think, pretty quickly. As far as the buildings are concerned, the plan for...
The way?
Yeah, the layout and all that, that's all included as well. Yeah, I left you a hard copy over here, and that's also an email, that's actually there. So, and I also left a hard copy for the radiation report from Shell, so it was contaminated property, now it's, everything's clean. Did 47 test samples, and the highest reported was 48 parts per minute, which was less than half of what the state has. So that's all I'm here, I mean...
Okay.
I think, I mean, like I said, I honestly thought that if we did it wrong, he directly didn't have it, that's all.
I don't know whether this is gonna happen tomorrow, I can check my notes.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's been a systemic issue that we took for us. It's not just this particular area.
Right. Okay, I mean, do we have a thing or something?
The only thing, just to remind, if you're gonna start doing work, you may want to, you definitely should contact DHP to have their site guy out there. So assuming that the drainage is all right, or it's all wrong, doesn't really matter, have someone out there from DHP doing, because when you do your excavation for your separate, or I'm sorry, for your drainage, you're gonna rip stuff out, you're gonna have to look at the soil, you wanna have someone from DHP be there to verify and do that, monitor. So you wanna have them out there, even if things change in the future, or getting inspected, so that you're at least... I tried to, the Shell engineers were there every single time we go, you know, because part of the purchase and sale of the issues, they took countless samples. Every time they were bucketing the ground, they would leave a sample, come back with results, add samples on site, yeah. No, it's not, yeah, an issue of contamination, it's an issue of infiltration rates.
Okay.
And just making sure that what you designed, and you assume a certain soil, that that soil is really there. I mean, I think this one's really well tested, because you've got all the forms and all the other stuff, so. And shit's... Yeah, to that point as well, so I looked up, again, I think I mentioned this over the phone, looked up the minutes of our past meetings. I mean, our second meeting in January, January 25th, I believe we signed a construction letter, which I think was sent to Mr. Tamiola, and not him. Do you still have that? Have you, have you transferred that to Mr. Fuller? Or should we look into just getting you a copy of that? Because that, that sets forth the obligations that you need to follow, visa VHP inspection. Do you have that? Yeah, I think I have that.
Okay.
Actually, VHP is what raised all of my VHP, you know, because to be honest, between real zones and Shell and everything else, I was just overwhelmed with people coming, I, you know...
Coming to visit and seeing...
This doesn't ring a bell. So then I actually called Wayne, just out of the blue.
Okay.
One, I think I told you this story. I called Wayne, and I'm like, "Hey, you know, you have any idea what I'm doing?" He's like, "Not really." So then I gave him the whole thing, told him that all of this stuff is here, and Shell just, I mean, we paid quite a lot of money to get this, to get the reports squared.
Yeah.
They expired the reports in 40 hours, so, so they got this back to me, that was a little last week, so I was able to tell them this information as well, she was about here, obviously, everyone was about here.
Yeah, no, good, yeah.
And he just told me, he's like, "Hey, the comments, let me get your plans signed."
Yeah, right.
Get your basis, let me know what's going on with the infiltration system, that's right, all right. At the end of the day, like I said, I thought I was doing the right thing. I was doing the right things, just with the wrong people, I guess, in terms of...
Yeah. We'll get there, I'm just hoping that it's, there's no...
All right, so for an amended site plan, I actually don't have my rights around these bars, please, if you're concerned, do that, but... Just want to make sure, close the loop on that. Amended site, professional review is $800, and an application is $600. So it's up to you guys, but $800 to the, it's a minimum, $800 for a professional review fee, and that's really just a... That's not reasonable, given the scope. He's gonna probably spend a couple hours, probably six, you know, $800.
But then, and do we still have money for the inspection?
I don't know, I don't know that we've gotten any money for a construction inspection. A letter might help. He paid quite a bit of money for it, I don't know, that. Yeah, it's a separate fee. Because it's having VHP go out, and it's, you get, if you don't use it, I mean, if you get VHP out there at the right times, they do one visit, if you have to come back three times, you pay more. So it's all coordination, just like, I mean, the other job, same thing. It's a reversible thing. And the letter that you got, the construction letter, says Monday meeting to Malibu, Friday and Thursday.
If you have a construction meeting before you start the foundation work, like Monday or something like that, then...
As far as with...
Then, uh...
Reach out to Wayne.
That Wayne could come over, one of these guys could come out, just get the schedule.
Yeah, always good to do this. I mean, I can get him to speed on what the timeline's up, you know, whether to make us, but...
Who's the, who's the site guy? The guy from Holden?
Yes, Dorey.
No, Wayne's guy from, the inspector, Jack. That is a Jack?
Yes.
But he's...
His guy, yeah, well, Jackson's the new guy, can't think of his name, I worked with him for years, so, should know.
Because, I mean, like, if you just coordinate with them, though, I guess he drives through town.
Yeah, he lives in Holden, so it's, if you get him on, he'll, he should be able to figure it out, he can come, so.
So, whatever's going on.
Larry, Larry Gilkowski.
Okay. We just, just get it up for them, make sure that they can inspect if you do one work.
So really, just getting the inspections done, and then, even if it's before, definitely if it's before the final approval of all the drainage and all the other stuff, because you're gonna, you're going ahead at risk anyway, so get it inspected, so that what you build is up the street.
Right, so then when the drawings are all, Wayne's is all great, it's all perfect, then we're sort of done.
And pre-construction meetings require in our approval letter from the back a couple years ago, but I don't really ever had one of those, but we want to try to get that going, so VHP has someone in attendance. That's something that shouldn't have been missed, but we want to make sure you get...
It's just, like you said, you can get him up to speed.
Right. So that happens with Wayne?
In terms of Wayne, he might get you in touch with this site guy, just to get his schedule working?
Yeah, probably just be Larry, whoever's inspector, something, I have to come back here.
No, just, just talk to Wayne.
No, just getting him out there, and if, if anyone of us wants to attend, in the past, I don't believe we've ever attended one, but we always get invited, and let VHP do it.
Just to make sure that, you know, nothing gets missed.
Right, that's all. It's a good opportunity, too, I think, to try to keep their review fees down, till we spread, there's more, we're moving communication, that's generally...
Yeah, being a total better than not.
So from this meeting, I gotta get to some point, like I said, I thought he was gonna be here.
Yeah, I think, yeah, I think he asked, and I told him not to come again.
Okay.
That also keeps the fees down.
Yeah. Wanted to just see where we are for now, and you can reach out to him.
And you've sent him all this digital?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I call him tonight, leave a message, or call him tomorrow in the morning and say, "Can, when can you get somebody else to the site? This is where we're at, this is where we're going, and hopefully the plans are what we want, but let's get everything inspected."
That's what I was asking about, construction, you can say, whatever, Friday, whatever, ten, we're having a construction meeting, they came today, you can ask your questions and find out everything that's going on, you know, in that meeting.
Was he out with Holden that question?
Larry?
He's a guy, he lives in Holden.
Oh, he lives in Holden?
He just, he just lives in the area, and he works for DHP at the Worcester office as a construction inspector. I think he's still with them, I'm not sure he's...
I mean, they'll have somebody, but it's just, it was nice when he was saying... Did he come to your...
I haven't been going to the project meeting, that's been...
Yeah, he doesn't go, they don't usually go to the project meetings, because that's just not wasted time, but they're talking about a lot of things that he's not really involved in. The inspection for planning board goes out there, and there's a list of, he looks at certain things, and then he leaves. I mean, he doesn't need to watch you lay 150 feet of drainage, but wants to know that you're doing it right.
Right.
And then walks away.
And he's always inspected or something like that.
Right, yeah. I mean, well, they've got probably a couple days of laying plastics, so hopefully we can make something happen before, I just don't want to waste a stop in front of everybody.
Keep going.
Great.
Yeah, actually, I will...
Oh, actually, this is the little bit that's high, right? Yeah, this is the... It's in Wayne's, I'll plan it.
Oh.
What's that? It's, uh... Transfer 6,000 square feet onto his property from... You need to give, um, rush for that, just, because you need to see...
Three, three.
So, and we need three out of five, and like I said, I'm, well, it's kind of up to you. I guess we do the notification, I work for the DCR, I know you went through a whole rigmarole with the DCR, and I could have an agenda and try to not have you do something if there was one, but it's simply an hour, and I've worked on it in the past, so it's kind of up to you, allow, I'm good, I can decide that.
Do we not get the branch?
Then we're also...
What do you think? All right, what is the change on this one?
We just kicked the property line over, and what we're doing is, like I said with these here, we moved the building over here off of all of that, we're gonna keep the part of the property.
Just out of the...
What is that, what was the bank financing, they want to build a building along that?
Oh, so now it's just part of this lot?
That's all we're doing, just joining that with that lot.
It's got the frontage.
They have all the frontage changes.
I can't see, so...
492.
Frontage area.
Yeah. We didn't change any of the frontage. This is a lot, this is why I'm gonna try this piece out, add it to his...
It just, that looks like it's not half that.
Well, no, all of this stuff, all these lots are already, already prepared. All we need to do is just this draw right here, it's all the...
Oh, yeah, no, but one of the, what we all checked, it's just the frontage, frontage.
Yeah, that's nothing changed, the lots are still the same.
So, so, there's no change in number of lots?
No change in frontage.
And then, oh, the frontage.
No, it's just this little draw, it's like 40 feet, just to, because there's one building in the back, so it's property line.
And they want to...
They wanted it to build up.
And what's that? Say anything?
All the lots, the requirement of equality here.
Seen them all paper? Is there one under here?
There's over here. No, we got six, as long as we have six, we're good. Do you have any in R?
You?
No, I don't. Do you want to ask? It's not usually, but I see one, two, it's a bit too big.
Is this going on?
I believe you guys...
What did you have?
Mark Tamiola.
You guys are talking about VHP, the head CEO is my best friend. You're talking about that? Right next, Thomas is right next to you. My sister, I've worked, I've gone up to...
This is changed.
No, no.
The reality of everything just hits you all.
No, he said, he just...
And they have a song.
Right. Are there any comments on the A and R?
We have, we're gonna bring something up later, but I mean, everything's fine.
If you want to discuss it now, we're on the agenda for...
Oh, but on this one?
No, no, no.
Okay.
No, just, well, on the buffer between the 137 and the 137.
That isn't this case.
Because you're, this...
That's on the next lot over here, they're trying to rearrange lots.
It's under new business.
Yeah, no, no, do you have any issue with what they're doing?
No, we just want to add some more shrubs, some more...
To the rest of it?
Better wine, if you like, that's all.
So we're okay on this one, I guess?
Okay.
So, sign away for this one?
Motion. We have a motion to endorse the site plan, I mean, the A and R for, who's the owner?
FHE Enterprises?
Yes. Oh, okay. Two lots, what is it, lot Z and lot C? Transferred also from lot Y to lot...
To lot C.
What?
It's from lot Y to, to lot Z two, is that it?
Just Z.
Why is these states?
There's a motion, second.
Discussion, give them all a favor. Aye. What's the owner intent? FHE Enterprises? Is that correct?
LLC.
This is not CLT, is it? Is that previous?
That's previous.
It's got the right note, it's got the...
Yes, it's on the top, frontage area, and what's the...
Provision or something?
No, I think it's the D, 510 today, it's the 10th, yeah. Another 510, 1781, P3, preference.
Why does it say owned by CLT up here?
He actually owns a lot.
Oh, really?
Yeah. What's that?
This one should be in the next rev, so the next rev has not yet? You know, because it's amendment to your original? So is that, that, that's correct? The site plan...
Site plan is showing the storage units, doesn't have our signatures on it, so that was another kind of wake-up call, that it should have triggered something.
It did.
With our building inspection. Well, but, so that was, so we need to review that, when Wayne reviews the drainage.
So I think it's fine, it's on the R, so...
Right, well, I, I think you're gonna want to look at circulation, I assume that you can get around where you need to, because it's your site anyway, but it's, we look at circulation, we look at drainage, we look at, um, that's pretty much, those are all big things for, because you're not changing the building in front, right? So it's just interior circulation, drainage, we would look at, so it should be easy. So that's all I can think of.
What's number one? 81P3? 510, 1783?
Only three? It's still early in the year. Yeah, 1, 2, 3. Do you have six plans?
I think Mark has the...
He's chatting outside. Well, if you do, and if, if you don't have it, you can sign the original, and you send us two copies of the signed file, and send it to my... I can bring back? We can sign six copies, and we have four here, if you'd like to...
You're saying one?
Well, we sent the same sign, and we go from there. I think the level... So, we won't sign it, we'll sign the Mylar, and just make a copy of the Mylar and send us one more. Or do we even use up all of it? Okay, so we need all six. So, okay, that's probably three.
The town clerk.
We have to stop for three, right? I can't read you guys' names.
You know it, it's what we're showing on. Make sure yours is large. I love that pen. It's almost as good as my Swirly. But it's got a level, it's got a screwdriver, it's got, it's got everything, it's like the Swiss Army knife pens.
Looks heavy.
It's not even heavy, it's like, it's actually... Yes. Yeah, I mean, we'll keep one in the file, the drainage report. Do you need it for a little while?
No.
That time, read over?
I'd like to say we're done, I guess. Can you explain what happened over here? I...
Can you explain what happened over there?
I have no idea what happened over here. Yeah, the point, well, actually, I think you've been talking to Jim Pedoni for parks, I'm on the open space committee, and we're trying to get, we're trying to write up the open space and recreation plan, and I guess you came to me in the last January and talked about a baseball field?
Yes.
And I got all excited, because Little League baseball field is really what we need in town to kind of adjust, good old art, which is all jammed together, and it would've been really nice to be a baseball field, and I...
The only reason why I have to work this out is because I have to get this done first?
Oh, this is still, I'm looking at a seven-year plan, so I was thinking...
There will be four baseball games on the property.
Full size or...
There'll be two Little League size, one regular size.
That's great, yes.
And for, for time use sometimes?
Yeah.
It's good to have testing, so, yeah.
They're all excellent.
Couldn't go there, really? Isn't it approved for that? And the drain goes under it?
No, there's, there's a whole other plan that's back here that I have locked down until I can... Now, that's, and I think that's great, because that's, I gotta get the revenues flowing first with this plan, and then, you know, because I'm, I'm expecting another 12 to 14 on battle with that one, too, so.
Battle?
Yeah. It just takes time.
That's what I'm talking about, drainage, yeah.
That's all, I mean, you go back to...
So we'll keep these, you can have them in there? That work? I'm happy with it.
That's good.
You need this?
Is that the application for him?
Oh, wait, do we get the...
Two lots.
But no, not change.
Benny, I talked to Bobby just now, he's in the, I'm gonna drop, probably on the... Oh, okay. I'm gonna drop, he's dropped a claim, his veil box, he's gonna get home from work tomorrow to stamp it, so I'll have it here. Oh, no, actually, all you have to do is make a copy, sign one, and...
Okay, so we can...
No, we're not that...
Okay, all right. Easy. So, what, it's a 300 bucks or something like that?
Um, 200, 500 fee, a review fee was $100 a lot, so $300.
Because it's a...
Let me check, I can do a great card.
I don't know if we can do a great card?
I had a great check, I think I was supposed to...
I can have it. When you bring that, when you bring it in.
Yeah, I should have put out the town clerk, too.
For the amended site plan, too?
No, it'll be here.
So we got that for the A and R, and then, the site plan, construction, oh, sorry, amended site plan review was...[1755.14]
Twelve hundred.
Eight, six and eight.
Six and eight.
Twelve and fourteen. And, well, actually, it's up to you guys, you wanna reduce the review fee, because it's not a whole, a lot, not the engineering, because that, they get that anyway, but we need six hundred, I don't expect that we're gonna do a public hearing.
Oh, it's amended to, no?
It's an amended site plan review, so we can reduce that.
So instead of. Fine, I mean, I, as long as Wayne gets covered in energy. Yeah, that's okay.
Six hundred review fee?
No, six hundred.
You have.
Six hundred application fee. So I'd be okay with cutting that to half? Yeah, so three, maybe eleven hundred? Great, so. We got it.
It's good to me.
So I guess I'm motioning to reduce the application fee for the amended site plan submittal.
Will be to make the one.
From six hundred to three hundred.
Remain neutral?
No, he already said, oh, we hooked it for the other one.
Wait one second.
We'll allow it all for site plan review, so we know it's three hundred, isn't it? And we'll lay out to town.
Town.
I'll take it.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Nice meeting you.
We know, we have a good luck. I don't think, just picture, I think people, you wanna copy, copy and forward, email. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right. I like this minority theory. The minority people are doing really good.
Don't say those things.
Can you read this one?
It seems like it in mine.
Have a good night.
Good night. I can't just say those things. Should I say they were all?
Yeah, let's take care of people here, then.
All right, so next on the agenda, we'll take up the A and R for one fifteen Churstbury Street. That's the, that's the rest of the application. This is, that's the site plan that goes along with these drainage caps?
What do you, what do you want to do? I don't want anything.
We're on your side, I think.
You are, okay.
One fifteen, one fifteen. Yeah, just so you don't have to wait around a lot.
Okay, I have no problem.
This is ours?
I have a name line.
No, that's Larry, that's just Larry, that's the one.
Oh, that's all right. Is that on the other?
Two in place.
That's in, oh, you know, it's, um.
Do they have the whole package? They do, should be right.
Lambert?
Chris does.
No.
You all have a copy of that. You all have a copy of it, but. It was put in order.
So we're wanting to wish us?
Yes.
Is that it?
Yep.
So we get this all lined out, so now you know what you're gonna try to do?
Yes, yes, so the, the A and R describes, she had this all surveyed out, and this piece of property is being conveyed to Mel, to Mel and Melon.
One lot? So, so there's not, how many lots are there? Okay, so three lots.
Yeah, the survey had left it that way, to property best to be that way, so, but this piece of, so we're breaking off this piece of property from here.
Yep.
And we'll make it to Mel and Skitcher, the owners of this piece of property.
But it's staying in a separate thing, that you can sell?
Yeah, yes.
Yeah, but the ownership might change.
Which is, which is why you did it that way, I guess.
Yeah.
And all the deeds are, have been already done that way, all along with parcels.
Is this somewhere where you had, you brought in some pictures, or some evidence that this was pre?
Prior to.
So, so we can wait.
Lot three subdivision.
That's, that's in the, that's in this package.
It's in the minutes, that you nicely highlighted.
So, just, just to explain why this is handwritten things in here, when I went through the deed and had it written separately, I noticed that one thirteen wasn't noted on description of the address, and on all the deeds, one thirteen and one fifteen are listed, so these two properties, I wanted to be consistent, so he said to go ahead and just write it in, so I did, and then, he mentioned, he notes the meeting minutes from October twenty-sixth, but that's when we came, we asked for your advice on how to handle it, and he gave us your advice.
And then you came back.
And when we came back, and then, so I noted the March eighth minutes.
That's when you came back with the, with the other, the pictures and everything?
The pictures of the mortgage document, so I wanted to close the loop there.
No, that's perfect, because then it's all in place for what we're looking for.
And then he had, he noted that it was a chat, it was an attachment, because of, of the property, so this is the, yes, from October twenty-sixth, from the age.
She's good.
And then, and then the parcels.
Oh, the ownership that's going to be?
The ownership that it currently is, yeah, this is what it currently is, and parcel two is being conveyed to, which is what it says on the line, parcel two owned by.
It's owned by Gene, now there's a re-convey to.
He just didn't, he just didn't repeat all the names, being conveyed to William and Melanie, so I, I didn't understand, I had, I asked him to correct a few things, and I didn't understand that this is an, a record of intent, so that you list the first change, and then you list the, the way things are currently with Mel.
And owned by.
Right, with William and Mel, this, so this is the intent to change parcel two over to William and Melanie, and then, what, parcel one stays the same, and then parcel two and three is what it currently is, but being that this.
Okay, that's the note of what's going to happen.
Right, exactly.
Yeah, that's okay.
And he didn't repeat the names up at the top, one of the two, because.
Because others?
Redundant, others are listed below, yes.
They're both in page, they're in page.
So I also included here, it was a little confused, he, it was a little confusing with them when they started to do the A and R, because the last deed of record for this property was a one change from one of the five children, in proportion to one of the other children.
Okay, so it wasn't from nineteen fifty, it was from more recently?
Yeah, so it looked like it was two owners, and then now it was only one owner, so it was confusing, so, so I had.
We'll worry about that.
Yeah, so he, without the history, he didn't realize that, so I had to go back one more deed, and.
Oh, then it was there?
Yes, yes, when the mother gave the property to five children, and then the only change for the subsequent due two thousand fourteen, was when one of the children gave her, only her share to.
Back to somebody else.
Right, but, but still, it was still consistent, the still, the four owners still.
They're still there.
Yeah, so this is just record of deeds, this is Mel, William, and Skitch for parcel one.
No.
William, no, yeah, sorry. William D, who is it? And then, the original, the, next to the last deed where Louise, Larabee, the mother, gives the.
Oh, and that shows that it gets dispersed, okay.
By children, and then, the last one was just one of the children, Lynn giving her proportion to Gene.
Okay.
But the other owners is still attacked, being James, William, and George.
As far as all that. District.
And then, and that's the, I was referring to the, you know, refers to one thirteen, one fifteen and everything, so I wanted it to be consistent, so.
Is that on here?
In the square?
It's on deeds.
Which square is it?
Inside of house, does it have numbers?
Just a small square.
No, it doesn't, no, because it just has the accessories.
Yep, no, that's one.
Lots, which is what, twenty, twenty-nine, yeah.
One sixty-nine, twenty-nine, eighty.
Twenty-eight.
And you're keeping two of them side by side within the same name?
Yes.
Same long list of names?
No, this one, it was a long list of ways, and this is, yeah, this is gonna be William and Melanie.
And you, I mean, we can sign the A and R, check with your attorney to make sure that you don't lose your zoning separation, if you have two properties that are side by side, and same formal legal names, it gets merged, so that in the future, you wouldn't have the option to break it out, so, make sure, I mean, you've done a lot of homework already, but that's one of the things that law, they call it checkerboarding, you only. Like, George F. and George somebody, whatever it is, Larabee, but, or first name is, someone middle initial Larabee, and then someone without the middle initial, same person, but without their middle initial Larabee, just so that deeds are not to the same names, or to LLC or something like that, just check with whoever your surveyor is, to make sure you're not gonna get stuck in the future.
I think it's just, it's a technicality, because they tend to put them back together, because they're the exact same name, so maybe, when you list it, make this William Larabee, Melanie Larabee, and these ones be William D. and Melanie A. and Melon A.
Something like that.
They don't look at it and say, oh, we should put these are the exact same things put together.
Because when, like, when you change zoning, make it more restrictive, like, if we go from a half an acre to a full acre zoning, and someone owns a one acre lot that was two half acre parcels? They'll come back to us ten years later and say, well, I can pay taxes on these two lots, but they were side by side, same name, same ownership, and because the zoning regulations now have one acre, they only have one lot, so, I'm not sure how we'll apply this, and it may not even apply, but just check it, so you don't, you've done a lot of homework and a lot of work already, don't let it, like, you don't let it almost slip.
Okay.
And it's called checkerboarding, if you have a talking, just say, make sure, if you have to check or board it, which, what they did was, when they had the smart blocks, one person went on it, one name, same person in a different name, when you own the middle one, and then a third person owns the last, so, you know, alternate names, so it's checkerboarding.
So that's something I should check with, you have an attorney?
Check with whoever your attorney or your surveyor, that would be more on checkerboarding.
Okay.
Just, because right now, it's the way you want it, you just don't want it to get merged, changed back, or changed back to just one lot.
That must have been, it must have been with the surveyor saying, when he said to me, I counted his two lots, and he started to say something about a case for, for future, and then we got off onto another topic, so that was.
And, and I guess you just, just to ask him, say, how do we make sure that that gets preserved and doesn't get put together when they're under the same name, is the question to ask.
I think it, it may be because it's two separate buildings that you're covered, but I wouldn't wanna assume it, and then, I'm not on the board in ten or twenty years when we come back with something.
You'll still consider.
No, maybe I will. But you're lucky, but I wouldn't want it to lose all order.
Right. So, motion to accept endorse parcel one, parcel two, parcel three, add. What's the addresses? One thirteen.
One eleven.
Thirteen, one fifteen.
Churstbury Street, what she said.
Second.
Very formal.
All the paper? Are there any butters?
Yeah, that guy looks like he's pretty angry.
Yeah, it's, it's, sorry about that.
I'm taking a fat seat in this one place.
He's the James.
I have to deal with her every day.
Did you blow that?
Yes. Three eyes.
Three eyes?
Fifty-seven. And the ownership is Larabee, or which?
Oh, which one are we doing?
Churstbury's on the list.
Then it's this one.
Do you want Larabee, or?
Parcel one, parcel two, it's these two ones.
So William D. Larabee. Okay, it's just a listed R thing, it doesn't matter. Doesn't mean anything, it's just a.
It doesn't mean anything, nineteen sixty-four.
It must mean something.
I don't like that, Benny, write it in, so we can, this will be legible, the other one didn't matter, this one matters. All right, we'll sort these out.
Yes, let's do so. No, that's on the floor this year.
Really?
But when, actually, when signing site plan reviews, it's the same thing, we usually put them on the other side of the table and just walk down.
Oh, yeah.
How many, we've had, like, we've had better years.
Oh, yeah, we've had thirteen, fifteen.
Yeah, we filled up the page.
How far back does that book go?
From the start, right?
Fifty-four or something? No, I think it's seventy.
Just because it's early in the year?
Yeah, fifty-nine.
Oh, that's not very many.
Nineteen fifty-nine?
Wow.
Yeah?
Wow.
See, that's before.
Clearly.
Way before.
Right, like, this one, ninety-three was a one.
Wow.
But then, you know, eighty-five is.
A lot happens.
So numbers lost the book?
Right.
Wow.
That's easy, yeah.
You can see how the ownership has changed, too. It's definitely gotten worse. We had some printing years, some cursive years.
Sharpie?
Do you have the number card? Yeah.
So now do I take one of these down to the, um, this registry, the Mylar one?
Yeah, we'll keep these ones. No, yeah, we keep these ones.
We keep the.
And you get this one.
Okay.
You go to the registry, and then what do you do with it afterwards? Just submit it, put it in your ledger?
Well, it's, it's supposed to register, it's recorded, it's done, and it's what they have.
I don't think, you know, maybe you scan it.
Scan it?
Yep, and then you can look it up online really easy.
Yeah, I've spent a lot of time doing that, believe me.
Right. I watched what I did.
Oh, my goodness, because to get all the older ones, anything beyond early the nineteen fifty, it's just really handwritten records.
Yep.
And then, and it's really very abbreviated what the information is, and then to go and find the actual document that applies.
Do you have to find it, or is it all scanned in?
No, you have, well, it's scanned, but it's, it's, it's a different way of searching.
You have to look at a different.
Yeah, except actually help me with that, we figured out how to do that, because we spent a lot of time trying to do it ourselves.
We got an opening.
Right, there you go.
You know, if you're someone who's got experience, you're always studying your organization.
You can lose the book.
She wouldn't. We wouldn't leave it to you.
I'm waiting, every time it shows up. We'll put it down somewhere.
Do I need any other documents other than that?
For the registry, you know?
I don't know, actually.
I'll take deeds, I'll take the deeds.
I mean, if you brought your, a copy of your application, it's got everything in it.
I'll do that, okay.
But we also do copy that.
Oh, I have one.
Yeah, okay.
I have a warrant, do you need that?
No, she's got plenty of that, yeah.
Well, I think on sixty-seven, if nobody can beat themselves.
And.
But Melanie's very efficient, so. Maybe you have copies, it's just that I know they're all, and the fee is.
They were three, and they, or was this one before?
This, this was, this was, well, they were, they were three, but these two are together in the.
Okay, so was it two, this line wasn't there before? I'm just trying to figure out, the, the fee is based on how many lots you go from.
Oh, well, they told me one.
But creating one, so it's going from.
Two to three?
Two to three.
But create one, from one just three, eleven, thirty?
Three, all right, three hundred.
Three hundred, yeah.
Yeah, three hundred.
Everyone's got permission.
Now we know.
Brain's helping with that.
Yeah.
You're doing last thing.
Yes, for my, I can, I guess.
Right, and there's, uh, there was the related issue with the buffer?
Yes.
What?
Yeah, so, attached here, you'll see there's a PowerPoint, but, well, first of all, it's a property that we were just, we were just discussing earlier with these other gentleman.
Rules at one thirty-seven?
One thirty-seven, yeah, and I like, I have the whole.
Oh, this is your view of them?
Yeah, I have the whole, they have a whole drawing, but I just think, and the whole thing, I just really figured that you needed the legend.
But this is what they changed, right?
That's what they changed?
Yeah, it's, it's on drive base, and now it's a bunch of little, they put this on the far end.
Yes.
So this is, this is the house, this is the property here, so.
You could break that there, A and R, really, yeah.
So this is, so the view, the view that we have now, so this is their property here, these trees, without. These trees, without the exception of a couple of the old ones that got cut down, so this is.
So it was run there property?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. So they're planning on, they've got, on the adjoining, evergreen space, eight, fifteen feet apart. So what we would like to see is if they can, they could increase, or decrease, I should say, decrease the distance of trees by like, by maybe eight feet apart.
Just to make it better screen?
Just to be a better, yeah, because this is gonna be a building, it's gonna be very close to the border. So, but I just talked to Mark out there, Holly was, I wanted him to know that, you know, we're on the agenda for their project, just so in case they wanted to stay. They'd been suggesting to us, us by actually by BHB, that perhaps they could utilize some of the trees from here, over here instead, just to keep their cost at a level, at a level basis, and improve the buffer along here.
Wouldn't we be enough free to, to bring this up to them next week? Or whatever.
When will you do the cycling?
And they don't have a public hearing part?
It's up.
Because they could come back for that part, or, we can bring it up too.
We can make it a public hearing, we could just notify them when we're gonna talk about it, and it's.
With the only butters. Easier now.
So when's our meeting, when's our meeting when we'll talk about it?
Uh, hopefully it'll be at our next meeting, just because they're, they're moving along.
Yeah, I'm not sure if you.
I mean, I actually gave you a lot of, but you need to kind of get it analyzed.
Right, and, and their plan, further the plans, would show what they're gonna, th- this may have changed, because then, this is their opportunity to change, that's why they're coming in.
Okay.
They're changing over here, I don't know what they're doing over there. You know, and this is the time to.
We can have that discussion, right, as we see piles of loan being brought in.
Well, it's, it's their loan, it's just.
No, 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 so, do you wanna notify us whether you're, when you're meeting with them?
If you can watch, yeah, just keep.
It's gonna be in the next meeting, or the meeting after that, I mean.
Okay.
Just watch.
Also, it'll be on regular, so.
Yeah, oh yeah, and it'll either be, our next meeting is the twenty-fourth, so two weeks from today.
Okay.
Or the second Wednesday. Yeah, which is.
Yeah, I see.
At four.
It's either two weeks or four weeks. And I just, it just depends on how our engineer is reviewing this, the project.
Okay.
And then we'll.
All right, that sounds, that sounds reasonable. So, yeah, okay.
Yeah, and you call back and, and remind me, somehow remember to bring it up anyways.
Oh, I should, we should remember.
Oh, we'll be here, yeah, we'll be here.
They are seeming very reasonable.
Yeah, and a few trees are.
That's minimal compared to, I, I got a little concerned because I saw when he was gone, when I was like, oh, this is, this is not a good time to maybe bring the trees, when he's worrying about, you know.
Well, he, but, right, but he's not planting those trees right now.
No, 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 just that in a grand scheme of things, he has bigger, bigger trees right now, yeah. All righty.
What's going, this contract is probably something to do, waiting for the work.
Lots of trees with them. The thing you talk about with the fields, is that right behind there?
No, it's on the other side of the railroad tracks.
Okay, so that wouldn't, right.
I was surprised, that four fields, that would be great.
Does it, yeah, it doesn't, it's definitely a problem, does it?
Yeah, from, next to the.
Right, they're like where the horse pit's already.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
That's on the other side of the tracks, right, right.
Well, that's what, I mean, that's what I'm looking for, is, I mean, right now, we were, we're facing the Goodell Park master plan, millions, twenty million dollars, eighteen million dollars, because we're trying to jam all this stuff in there. If we get, can take out one of the little league fields.
Right, it depends on.
And then just enlarge the track and the football field where they stand, instead of blasting four million dollars worth of ledge at the top. It makes a whole lot more sense, but now we'll, they didn't have it when they were doing the Goodell Park master plan, but now, it's possible to move one of the baseball fields out. If we got four, the baseball area could be this area, one thirty-seven, and then have one nice field for, whether it's softball, or whatever the parks commission wants to figure it out. But then, it saves ten millions of dollars.
Oh, yeah.
Which could.
I worked for the Parks Department in the nineteen sixties, Joe Mello.
Oh, yes, the pool, the Mello pool. Yeah?
Ten years old.
Older than dirt.
I had to say it, but I can't remember. We'll see you again. Thank you. Yeah, we will be back.
That's good, you're welcome.
Thank you all. No problems with the question.
Good, Larry's just done.
Questions about. Oh, you know, it's my shark, yes. Well, it's good, well, what's, um, Mr. Mew's been here for a while?
Yeah, the land, I'm just.
Which one is that?
It's, it's townwide comprehensive.
Oh, then I get a lot longer, so why don't you take care of my shark?
Yeah, maybe we can do that. If you don't mind.
Actually, yes, I, I was gonna do it just before the meeting, I was just gonna hand this out to you, actually. Because it's just, it's just really, you saw it already, Mark, yeah, it's just really a, a sort of, go ahead and take, take them, that's.
Do you, do you want?
You've been here a while.
You were first time you attended.
Two sites.
So actually, I just did.
Thank you for coming.
Oh, well, I'm sure, the mark, actually, was this kind of one year.
Right, let's not, you was across the hall, and it's like, come next, come to.
So this, this all we made is from the townwide plan, because, and you know, you've been on the board, the townwide plan is like, it's like the Bible, and nobody reads it. I mean, they read the Bible, but they don't read. So this, this, this whole idea came about on, on, you know, for a young. Came about, would you like one to turn to us? You know, came about to get people to, to read, so the idea is, is the format of, of the, the, the chapter.
Yes.
So, I actually brought also, just so you can kind of use it as, as a template. This is what the economic plan is. Now, obviously, they don't have as many fish to fry.
One baby?
You do, well, I think that anymore, but, but, but it just gives you an idea of what they're trying to do. So what we're trying to do is have headings, subtitles, and links to if somebody's interested in it. So if you're interested in what the zoning is here, then you can click on the link and go to it, so that we can thin the chapter. That way, people are more likely to, they're more likely to just kind of stand through it, see it, and see what they. More with a lodge, too? And then this is, this is sort of about how we spend design. And again, I don't have to do all of this, but you can see they use just different templates to, to organize it. And that's, that's really the key, is the organization, so the general topics, almost like an outline, and then links to the elements. So once it goes on the town website, too, people will be able to click on and look up whatever they want. In addition to having the.
The folder, yeah.
Right, exactly. But, so it's pretty, it's pretty simple, it's sort of like, I mean, it's sort of like high school, taking, you know, taking out the outline, and, you know, see the dent of A, or, you can see the map, zoning map B, or whatever. So that's kind of in this, you know, kind of suggestions, kind of how to do it. And what, I, I just wanna apologize, I mean, this, this came up two meetings ago, and I said, oh my God, all these boards have done all this work, you know, and now they have to do it again. And you're all, you know, and you're all, you know, you're all doing such a great job. So anyway, I'm your liaison, if you wanna complain, just complain to me, because I'm used to it. But anyway, I think it's pretty self-explanatory, and, and if you have any questions, just keep me on call.
Okay.
All right, thank you. Mind if we put a question for the fastest?
Bestest from today tonight? That's great.
All right, well, thank you very much. Thank you for letting me go, and it's nothing, no problem.
We'll definitely do that.
Okay, thanks so much.
Great.
So good, again.
All right.
Mr. Kaufman. You're back again.
Back again like a bad man.
Good to see you. All right, so this is it, regards to.
This is my wife.
So are you? Very good, very good. So you had some, I, I think it was, uh, questions, inquiries around a possible A and R for, for your property on my shark way, is that correct?
Yeah, I also talked with the door inspector, a little bit grateful.
Okay.
At least this will give you an idea.
Thank you.
I received a first color photo from town, and it's here. And what we wanted to do was take a piece of the property and make a separate lot, and put a single family house there, there's plenty of squ- frontage for that.
Yeah, frontage.
Yes, there's plenty of that.
So this is, well, it's, single residence, I think it's outside of aquifer protection, if I recall.
Except, so, something trickles through.
Frontage would be one, or two forty, I assume, right? It would be two forty, one twenty each lot.
Two eighty each, is, does that sound?
Yeah, they're twenty.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, let's see, that sounds. Yeah, but this, this one looks like he's got a hundred and seven, so the house plus ten feet is a hundred and twenty, and he's got a hundred and ninety to the property line to the east.
Okay.
So it looks like you've got enough air. Air and surveyor, get it done.
Yeah, well, we, that's when you'll see that, you know, we had him initially do it, wanted to make sure that I wasn't forgetting anything. So I wanted to come in front of you to make sure that.
Oh, yeah.
Access and frontage, I mean, it looks like it's. The ones that he's seen somewhere in here. Where's your driveway, on this side or that side? Is that your driveway?
Yeah, that's right.
I mean, it looks like it would fit, you know?
Yeah.
And you can just go back, or you can bring it back and wire, or?
Well, that's a question I was gonna ask, when I remember when I was on the board. It was supposed to be, correct me if I'm wrong, but it's supposed to be the same in the back area as.
To the house, it could be whatever shape, but that's a straight to the house.
Oh, okay.
To the front of the house.
And you need a, or you need at least a hundred and twenty feet all the way back to the front of the house. So if they, if you don't, if you need to kind of juggle the lot lines, you put the house up front. Or if you can keep them wide to a hundred and twenty, put the house back there, and then you can do whatever you want in the back. But generally, it's, it looks like you've got enough area. Is there an area on this, minimum, this forty thousand?
A total of sixty thousand, of going all the way back to the back of the property.
You only, well, sixty, total of sixty thousand?
Yeah, because those are really big.
Well, if you want, if you get eighty thousand, please.
Eighty.
You need eighty.
That would for, for building.
Right, right, because you need forty thousand for each lot.
There's only, yeah, that one lot though, right, what are you doing with one lot?
Oh, you're gonna break out one lot and get forty thousand, right, I was thinking, I was asking about the whole.
Oh, yeah, there's twenty, there's a total of five acres of property.
Oh, yeah, so it looks like in the picture, yeah, that makes sense, okay, good. That's a whole, yeah, and you can, you could do that, and if it's your daughter moving, and you just keep her all the back land and her taxes.
Just cartwheel.
Not that she wants it.
Or, or another field.
Yeah?
You need that field, you do, right, yeah, right there.
We need soccer field now.
Yeah.
So you guys could put soccer.
That drops down, that, she drops down to a lower area.
Yeah, there's a, there's a lower area down there.
And, I don't know, screw, maybe a hole.
The pine, does the pine blend with this? It's kind of pine blend that access off of Goodell, is that the?
Goodell, yes.
Because they might be interested in acquiring the earth back portion to make a loop, because they were talking, and I'm not sure if they're still talking about it, but potentially.
I actually addressed, was it not the Nancy?
Nancy.
Oh, Nancy, Lucy.
And I told him that I would be interested in the possibility of giving that to the town, because it's.
Because it's a don't use to you, you don't want to be.
Nancy's streaming, all that, dude.
Thank you very much.
So.
You know me well, don't you?
Well, the other thing is, you could actually get some tax benefit if you, um, break off, I'm not sure how much space you have and all that, but if you can break off a portion in the back, if abuts this, which is pine land, I think.
Yeah.
These tents, oh no, that's the garage, the tents go to behind, but.
They, they, it runs down through either.
Right, but if you write that off, you can get a tax deduction for the donation, the full value of that donation. But you would talk to the Greater Worcester Land Trust, or if you. If you can get me a card, I can get it to Colin Novak, get the Greater Worcester Land Trust, and he can talk to you about your options. She doesn't have a number?
I have it all myself.
All right, so I have to look it up, son.
And write it down, so we don't have a recording of the phone number on there. But you'll.
Yeah, just write it down on the annual. And then I'll have Colin Novak get in touch with you, because.
Yeah.
I mean, it's really just putting it together, having the survey done, and if your surveyor's gonna be breaking off a lot, you just have him draw a line this way.
Yeah.
And you can get some tax.
Over the last, over the last three years, I've cleaned a lot of that back.
Oh, yeah, good.
Of wood.
Oh, yeah.
And you can, you can ski down into that area, so it's really nice.
That sounds good, yeah. I mean, it sounds feasible, it's just.
So, what would be my next stop, next step would be to get this?
Just have him draw the NR plan.
Well, I would talk, I would talk to Colin Novak, that she created with the land trust first.
Okay.
So that you don't have a surveyor draw the plan one way, and then say, okay, well, we need to change this line, and you have to pay for it again. Just get all your ducks in a row, and then go to your surveyor and say, this is what we want. And then, he's usually pretty loyal, getting back to you in a couple of days.
Yeah, we'll hold off on it, so we'll wait for him to get.
And then come back and label something, see. Apparently you know who you looked at? Is there any, like, is there a homeowners association, or like a covenant, or something like that, about your, that I need to worry about?
No. The only one you have to worry about is to my.
Not homeowners association.
Thank you for your time, I appreciate it. Congratulations, I'm going home.
Did you want to run it?
Yeah. It's good to see you, yes.
I see you, like, just a little time, how boring it is.
So probably would like to have.
Nice to see you.
Good to see you, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so let's see, we have, we're accepting an SP cycling application? This is the new one tonight?
You believe that's seven minutes on schedule? That's pretty good.
We're working on it.
The sheriff's not here. It's, it's, you and sheriff's not here.
Dave's here.
Good evening, my name's Mark Carl with Goddard Consulting, so we're, submitted this application for cycling, it's three oh seven Lancaster Street, on the wall there. Um, so it's the site of Bethlehem Bible Church, and currently there's a, they're just doing, paved section of parking lot with a gravel drive and subject system, which has a, a lot of ties around it. Just to keep parking off it, and small retention bases, two catch bases, and a little corner. So the plan is to, to redesign the parking lot, just to make it more safer traffic, and also just more usable for the property, and increase in parking as well. So we wanna move, we wanna shift the, the ad entrance further up here, so we don't have a steep slope, so we're actually grazing this area.
Oh, is that why the loops back around begin from there?
Exactly, yep, so there's a, basically, there's a grade change, so you've got two twelve here, two oh two here, so there's a ten foot change right here. So basically, it takes, this side of the parking lot raises up to the grade of that tower, right now, right now the tower is about eight feet above the parking lot.
Tower?
The tower, so you, yeah, legible tower, so a nice, a nice, a nice landscape, a nice landscape feature, right, so. So, basically grazing this side of the parking lot up to that grade, so basically you would have a very smooth grade coming right off the road, and then you slowly drop, you lose your grade as you come down here, and you'd be able to come down here, right down to the church property. Um, and then we'd be pulling, um, expanding the parking lot back to the rear here, and then redesign, re.
And then the subject.
The subject system would be underneath the parking lot.
Okay, there's no sewer?
There's no sewer.
Is Lancaster, is that our road, or is that a state road? So you might have talked to them.
So Mass, so we have, we have Mass Highway, we have the electric company, we have water, health, conservation, and you.
I was just making sure DOT was in there.
Yes, yeah, yeah, we have, yeah, we have, yeah, we've, we've got everybody involved in this.
Good.
And, yeah, so you get ConCon?
Yes.
So loads of material in the back area that are.
Yeah, so we're, we're basically, we had a cycle where we were able to get some fill, so we just have it there. We were stopped trying it and trying to spread it a little bit so we could dry out, but eventually as, the project's going to go back even farther past where it is right now. The soap fence is around a hundred buckers on the box.
Is it, okay.
So you can see this is the hundred buckers zone right here, so we're still going beyond that. So we're going to be able to, we'll be taking that fill and bringing it in, and then we can bring lifts up with the standards for parking lots. But right now, it's just kind of trying to get it to dry out a little bit for.
And the septic is, it's a new system, or the existing system is staying?
It'll be same system, basically, but it'll be upgraded for.
It'll actually be upgraded to be able to accommodate a parking lot.
Okay.
This, this plan was contemplated back in two thousand and eight, that's when we started the date, and we started the process and then backed off of it. So, so we're sort of reviving the project from years ago. But this, this also brings the stormwater management up to the current standard. Because it was stormwater management, the site right now is pretty, pretty funky. You know, it's not really working very well. So this, this was in a catch basin system, a little much larger detention bond. So it's, it's better all around, from function to aesthetics, to current performance standards and regulations. So we've also filed a notice of intent with the Conservation Commission.
Have you gone to see them yet?
We're. So we're, we're just accepting, not really talking too much about it. I mean, I want to consider your screening requirements, that's one thing that jumps out at me.
Who's next door?
It's all residential next door, so this is.
Yeah, so we do have. Yeah, we do have some space in here, so we do have existing, I'm not sure.
We do have a landscape plan.
Yeah.
We don't need, we don't need to go into it now, but to be ready, because there, I think the bylaw says it's a thirty-foot screening requirement, so you want to look into that. Does that mean thirty feet of vegetation to the property? I don't think we even have thirty feet currently.
Yeah.
That's why, that's why you got to make sure. It may be appropriate for the front end where it already exists, but where you're putting new stuff in, they may, they may require you to extend it. So that's, just check and be ready. We do, we have to have, did we submit the landscape design plan with this, now we have a week? No. Yeah, so we have, we do have a landscape design plan and a lighting plan. Yeah, that's how, we need the lighting plan as well, so we're going to have it.
And while they're grading, if, if part of the screening was to be a mound up or something like that, that was the time to do that stuff too.
Well, it's, yeah, there's a lot of options, but yeah, to just.
Because that's what they did in Angel Grove, between Angel Grove and the. The industrial place.
Yes.
My favorite contractor, yes.
Curtis.
Yeah, between Curtis, that's industrial building, and then there's residential back. And they, they, actually their detention basin was around there too, and then they sort of mounted up, they put up tents on top.
Yeah, just for a screening, yeah. Yeah, I think we'll be, we're, we're, we're going to be able to keep a lot of vegetation along the property line, so that would be a benefit.
And it's not, it's not the same vegetation is, but yeah, it's.
It's, it's, once it's, once it's out, you really can't see through to the houses.
Well, that's, that's like a year-round screening, that's what's new, but.
Yeah.
What we have to look at now is, we get the plans.
Plans being, and then we.
And we set a date, so you know what's, and those for the butters. VHB. Send us, out to be a treat, thank you for this. Okay, this is.
I don't know if we sent it to VHB or not.
Contact information for the, for the town engineer, they're the one who'll be doing the, if you could send them the plans, all the, all the, all the.
Backing in.
That we have here.
Sure.
He'll, he'll begin email correspondence, asking the board, is it okay? Do we have sufficient funds to review? And they appear reviewing the stormwater design, or what else beyond that?
The second name is Stormwater.
Yeah, parking, you know, the screening, except that. They will, they will provide a letter of all zoning stuff. It'll come to a public hearing, usually at the times that, because you guys want to move it forward. They'll give us the comment letter, that comment letter will then be addressed or read at the public hearing. And there'll be what issues you see, most of it or a lot of it will be, oh, you got to correct this letter, and you got to correct a little bit here, change this corner, whatever it might be. But then there might be one or two things that are more difficult to, to make compliant with zoning, that's when.
Like thirty feet or something, if that comes up.
Can you do twenty-six feet, or twenty-four feet or something, and make it more dense than what is required for the screening? That's when you bring those up to the public hearing. And then go back, and then they, you make your final changes, or your changes, they do a review and say everything's okay. And then we issue our, or make our decision, and we issue the approval. Perfect. So we need probably a month. So. Yeah, I don't know how busy Wayne is, I haven't reached out to him with.
Well, we know he's busy with his.
So that's the one unknown at this point, but. So the sooner you reach out to him, the plans.
Yeah, I can, I can get that out, and they're better off, yeah.
The quicker this, this will go.
Sure.
Well, I mean, if he's, at least he can get it into a schedule.
Exactly, yep.
And so we probably wouldn't.
Well, I haven't.
We wait to get that, what's up?
Yeah, well, there's not, wait, I think, I think we can do that, because I've agreed on dates.
Second meeting in June?
Well, I have it before two.
That's the other thing, is we're not sure. Yeah, that's one month. And it's, I mean, it's kind of your, your call. We could set the hearing for a month from now, which is the earliest to be able to get on, it's a public hearing. But what I expect will happen is VHB won't be able to schedule their review until shortly before that. They'll do their review, send you a letter, and they'll say, oh, most of these we can handle, it's not a big deal. If we go to two weeks beyond that, what I would hope for, if they're not too busy, VHB isn't too busy, is they'll get you the review three weeks before the meeting. You'll have a week to make comments, send it back to them, they make the comments, and get it.
If it's on time, yeah, by the time you're.
But it's, it is two weeks longer. Typically, what we do on the planning board is, once everything's okay, we can vote approval at, close the hearing, vote the approval, and then the next meeting we'll have the approval letter assigned. So oftentimes, it ends up being the same timeframe anyway, but it all depends on how well the engineers work together. We were saying earlier tonight, it was, the last time we went, the last site plan review, did, the review engineer and the design engineer worked well together. I had this, I've got that, oh, I forgot to do this, so they changed it, and it was what VHB was looking for. We've had other engineers that, VHB asks a question, and all they do is complain about why they did it the right way, and they shouldn't have to change their one little number that doesn't really even change anything. And it becomes more of a different situation, so. So it'd be better we go to a later hearing.
What's your timeframe on work is of?
We get time, so. So, yeah, so it's the second meeting in June?
June twenty eighth.
I know, the, the run dates are going to be on fourteenth and twenty-first.
Oh, that's the other thing, on those dates, I'm no longer going to be chair, so you want to change what this is here?
No, you don't have to change it.
Are you giving us the letter notice form? Yes, so it'll notify the letters. You do. This is the bottom notice and the newspaper notice, it's you who's listening.
June fourteenth.
Which Cheryl's been there, you have her heart going.
What? Renina!
She's not here.
Oh, come back.
Well, she's.
She's nice, so she would stay in if we didn't, if we didn't get enough that.
We have, we can't vote until he's gone, because we have to have a new member vote, so she's going to be chair for that, for this meeting. Alright, so let me just make a second, see this. It'll be at seven o'clock still, right? He's got a lot to talk, I can cover this.
You take it on your own. And you stay in the church, I mean, the.
Yeah.
I mean, a couple of years ago, you were in sell to the town.
Well, that didn't go through, right, so. So the church is going to continue to use it.
Well, you, but you were going, you were going to move someplace.
Well, since the sale didn't go through, it started a. You sold your house, you buy the new one, and so you sell the old one.
Alright, so there's, it's got the run dates on it, it's got the.
Plus, I think the town liked it a lot, a lot more, and it was, they spark a lot, it's got a, you know, right now it's kind of a high score, so. The senior center, if the senior center doesn't go through, it's a town meeting.
At the price that's going, geez.
Is that the like bean, if somebody just checked to make sure, because I wasn't sure what that was supposed to be, it's probably.
So literally just put this in the, a letter notice form. Oh, you want us to run the ad? Yes, we'll see, we'll run the ad, and then you'll also have to notify, can I just use this as the notification for the letters?
Do you want me to send it to Mark? I'll, I'll just redo it, send it to him, so I'll have that clean copy of it. Do you want me to send it to Mark?
Perfect.
And any other, do we, do we do like the application in it too, or just then?
No, just, we just give them the hearing notice, and they take, they put, put it in the paper, and send it certified mail to the butters.
Okay, so yes.
Do you have any butters who should get that from the, the, the session?
Do we get the certified, it should be a list, certified list of the butters and butchers.
There is.
Okay, so that's all we have. Yeah, but it's missing the, the lighting plan and the landscape plan, so I'm going to have to get you guys that. Yeah, well, we're not, as long as you get that stuff to VHB, they don't want to get really into the details, but we're not going to look into.
The fourth thing.
And so you're, how large is the property? In total, it's five acres. So three to ten acres, it's a review fee of fifty-five hundred and an application fee of twelve hundred. What did we give you?
There's a check here for twelve hundred.
So that was the application fee.
So fifty-five hundred is the VHB cost? That's the upfront.
It comes back if they're using all, it's sort of the.
They're a big company, they'll never send it back. Oh, no. We don't pay, it's based on their hourly rates, which they do, they're not as cheap as you would expect, but if you don't call them up and say, well, what do you think we should do about this to correct?
Give them a bunch of billable hours, then they don't.
Because you're only paying for whatever they do, so that's what, you got to get in your head. But they do a good job for the planning board, because they, we haven't had one legal challenge to any of our plans for the last.
And they, and they'll send you, every time they invoice, what do they invoice, once a month, or whatever?
It's a monthly invoice.
So you'll see the invoice, they're supposed to copy, I see, in the applicant, so you'll see what they're doing to it.
And is there, is there any process to request a reduction in that fee, you know, being a church and all, or is that not?
Haven't we done that for?
Not, not the review fee, because the review fee is just there. If you do, if they don't do the work, I mean, if they don't use up fifty-five hundred dollars, you get it back. So if they're leaving with two thousand dollars, you get thirty-five hundred dollars back.
The way to keep that down is just to go to them once, you know, give them everything, you know, and then dance, you know, just be efficient with your interaction with them. Don't avoid them or anything, but I mean, just, that keeps that fee down. If you review, if they review a whole package, and have all sorts of problems, and they review a whole package again, it costs twenty some bucks.
Now, now, if they're going to be reviewing the stormwater, can that double as a stormwater review for the Conservation Commission's benefits as well? Yep, and for the GPW, yep. No, makes sense. Yep. Yeah, it's up to the five month, but I don't think that. So you can tell the Conservation Commission that the planning was proceeding with the VHB review? That's how they'll do it, other different review or something? Usually we do it, and if someone tells the ConCon that it's being reviewed, the stormwater's being reviewed by the planning board, they're fine, but it's their decision.
I think, is, we're the only one with an engineer peer review, right?
No, the ConCon can do it also.
But they don't do the usual?
For a bigger project, they will.
Oh, they do, okay.
But I think, the big thing to remember with VHB is, don't give them one plan, and then another little plan, and then another little thing, because like, if you're working on something, you get it all, you sit down, you work on it. If you do bits and pieces, those one hours add up to a lot more hours than if you just sat down and got the job done, so understood.
So that's how we keep that part of the fee down, and you're going to bring up the twelve hundred, have we?
Twelve hundred, I think we have reduced, do you remember if we've reduced it for?
Like Holy Cross?
Holy Cross, I think we, they asked, I think we reduced it, I think so.
I don't remember.
I think that's right. Did we cut it in half? I think that was, usually that's what we do, but, but what we have done.
Are you requesting that we do that?
I am requesting that.
Okay.
Good request. I don't think that, I mean, it's, your costs kick out. We want to keep you within the further amount of the money.
But we want to make sure you're comfortable.
So I guess I move to reduce the application fee on this from twelve hundred to six hundred.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
There you go.
Thank you.
So you have sent in the difference then between the.
I'll send you a check for forty-nine hundred.
Okay.
He's already done the math and said. Those college degrees are good, yeah. Alright, so that would be good. Alright, if you have any questions along the way, feel free to reach out. Email us. I'm sure you guys communicate with Conservation as well, you know, a lot, their process, right? No? It's kind of separate and parallel.
I mean, if they have, if they want to contact us, sure, but generally they're doing their own thing, we're doing our own thing.
We ask them for comments, and if they jump up and down with a lot of big comments, then something comes up. But generally, they say, yeah, it's coming to us, they've got a file, I don't know if they genuinely review it or not. Okay, great. Have a good night, thank you. Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Alright. That was a bold side of the agenda. Alright, let's see, the remaining areas, do we want to sign the plan for two a week?
Sure.
Back up top? Oh, yeah.
We need small pens, because we only have power-sized prints.
That's fine. And there's a signature block on all of them, or?
Two.
Which two important ones?
The first sheet and the third sheet.
We don't have the DAsbells, but.
The Asbells, the Asbells turn here.
I'm sorry, not the Asbells, the existing ones.
There's a, they're not on the detail sheet, not on the, I don't know what that, more details.
Okay, so it's on kind of the site plan.
It's on like the locus.
Yeah, and then the plan, right.
And then the first sheet, which is.
Yeah, normally we do it on all of them, but at least it's on two.
And we can sign them on the sheets. It's just something one.
Yeah, why don't we do that, just? How many sets are there?
Four.
Yeah, we'll just sign two and send them, the other ones to have them make copies and send you that.
You know, I'd prefer we do that, because I don't get copies that I'm supposed to get, I don't have copies at the food station, I have, I don't have any.
Oh, really?
No, and when you have, if people send them electronic, I still write down the paper copy, so I have.
Sort of sign all four.
Okay, so.
Well, you know, give it to them and say, okay, go ahead and sign it.
Actually, they're eleven by seventeen, we can actually copy them.
Yeah. That's not a problem, but, you know.
How do you, how do you want to do the same trouble once, just sort of like planning board approval, and then just sign? No, just print it in?
Yes. I like it.
Excuse us a minute.
He is? Looking for chair.
Yeah?
I'm going to zone him, Chris.
You can't, Toby's in charge of that. Do this right over there, keep this moving, we're, we're getting on schedule.
Ten?
Five, ten, seventeen.
They should correct the amount of copies, and then if they want to send them to the company.
Right.
But I want all copies, so I have.
No, that makes sense, that's good, I thought.
I was looking at that, too, I'm trying to figure out, we sent a couple of them, and I'm like, I don't know, I'll have to be.
Yeah, because I'm still, I want to get the copies for, one of the, I don't know if we're talking about, it's like the Sarabians.
Tullan.
But that, I don't.
It's unnecessary. You don't have as much room to sign on this one, when you.
Sneak in there.
Squeeze it in. Make it fit.
Can you see the maproom? Oh, where's, oh, he's signed, I'll see if I can find the old Sarabian plans. Did you, because he's, we asked him to bring them, you asked him to bring the plans? Let me know when he doesn't sign, and I'll jump right back.
Okay. Do you, can I make color copies?
I can make color copies.
Alright, I'm going to just do one. But what, I have to write the title block, this is horrible.
I'm gonna miss this, Chris.
I swear, I am, I am.
We're going to be talking about this evolution, that, and that.
I'm going to have to tune in, I do want to stay late.
Yeah, really.
You want her ratings?
Thank you, sir.
Sure. I don't know if I did it with those last meetings, but I'll take care of it. This is on the portions, that's right. This is on the portions, that's right. What a helpless, really ruckus on that, we should tell them to ground him, much. This is a very signature heavy evening.
I'll get a writing pen, I guess.
It's my favorite pen. So I can tell them I'm running level.
That's nice. Don't you guys get signature stamps?
I don't like signature stamps, I kinda like this part, it's like vocational.
It's slowing down.
It's supposed to rain this weekend, isn't it?
Sure. Why not?
Torrents, rains.
Yeah, it's gonna, but it's not, it's gonna start Saturday afternoon, Saturday night into Sunday morning, and he said there's a good possibility to clarify Sunday afternoon.
Oh, yeah?
So that sounds like middle one, Saturday afternoon.
We put everything.
I had a mow mine twice last weekend, I had to do the high mow and then do the second mow.
You shouldn't cut the grass too long, right?
Well, it's just like, cut it, whatever, it's seven or eight inches of the mower will go, and I brought it down to where we usually ours is like six inches or... Where it tries to live, and the daily lines do really well.
It looked nice for a while, I guess.
Yeah, I figured I'd give the crabgrass a bunch of genes.
Same thing about living in a condo, you have four, I'll cut the grass.
Being out there, just, like, over my lawn?
No, not big.
When you deliver the packet, you can...
Just leave the bower out.
Do you have a, do you have a wide mow?
No, I haven't for a little while, but the one's too small, it's like you're backing up and going around these and backing up like...
I don't, you know, I'm always glad, I like that.
You'll have to find my wife for it, my wife, me, daughters, the daughters don't care to do it, but... Make those happen, I can make them.
It's loose car.
Right.
Teaching the right way, they don't have to depend on the man to do that type of work.
We got a one to go on.
Right?
Right.
I have to.
Well, we still gotta get him, it's gonna be another hour.
He's due, we're gonna, we're gonna put in my cash, I won't tell that one.
In rush.
One more meeting, I could, I think so?
One or two.
One? After tonight, it's one, is after, is next month?
Hey, we're not even on.
Right. You're, you're serving at the, what is it, at the discretion of the, at the pleasure of the, of the select, oh, I thought it was the, Anita.
Town administration.
The town administration. Who's gonna have that?
Should we throw that in there?
I want that on the recorder.
Now.
Real psych.
What? You want it, what's in my room?
No, it's the old plans, when they proposed the liquor store. Would it be down in the basement? It might change.
Is it now where all your old stuff is in the basement?
Well, no, not the big plans, plans are over here, I think, but...
You know what he's gonna take those signs down?
Which signs?
The one that says do not enter and no...
Oh, I think he's leaving something like that up.
The ones that are on the, on the house, island, I thought he was, I thought he was supposed to take those down.
Well, he's gonna leave something up so people don't go off the wrong way.
No, when you're coming out of the Cumberland Farms.
Yeah, and you're going to take a left.
Yeah, I thought those two signs were supposed to come down, because it says do not enter.
Well, what?
Me, do not, it means you don't go, so where do you go?
Well, maybe that one, isn't there a keep right and stuff like that?
Well, there's a keep right, if you put the keep right and the do not enter on the same, so he needs to leave the keep right here and move...
I believe, I believe the...
But we haven't got anything from Cumberland Farms or from him, so...
Yeah, but if it's on the island, you can't say keep, you can't say keep right, you gotta say keep to the left, right?
No.
Because you gotta make a left to the left, to the left.
Well, no, you gotta keep right on the side.
On the island, you gotta keep right on the island. And then, I like the, the wrong way.
The paint on it.
Well, that's, but you know how when you, like, if you go the expressway the wrong way?
I wouldn't know that, no.
Well, but you can see it from the right way.
Oh, yes.
If you're on the right side, but you can see the signs on the left lane, the big red wrong way signs?
Yes.
You should get those.
How's your daughter's driving going by the way?
Perfect.
Okay.
She's not going the wrong way? Occasionally, whatever. Little money, she thinks she's in, in Europe, probably? Right, right. England, probably outside of...
London, huh? You give a lot, something else while I sign. All right, so next on the agenda is one eighty-seven West Poros Street, discussion of final drainage conditions, so I think the board was copied on, on all the email correspondence. The track record, you know, between Mr. Sarabian and the board.
Oh, that one?
Yeah, so he was, questions regarding the second entrance into the parking lot, that wasn't on the plan.
Right.
He responded saying that, that that was gonna be filled in and, 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 you know, restored back to the, the as approved parking plan.
That was the most correct answer I've gotten from him.
Yeah, so, so that sounds good. And then the other issue was the, the drain.
Yeah, and then I saw about the, the rain gardens.
Yeah, so, yeah, so he brought up the rain gardens, and then we were asking about having something from an engineer, you know, so that we could put together, you know, drainage systems that have been there for a long time, and Cumberland Farms came in and did what they did.
Broke up or completed or...
And then, and all of that, and that's when Mr. Sarabian mentioned that he had been here at a couple of previous meetings last summer.
Yep.
Where, where this topic was raised, and then at the second meeting, he brought in pictures showing, I think it was the, the rain garden. And so he was considering, considering that they're closed based on those, those previous discussions.
Are those rain gardens are approved by...
Gudini?
Gudini.
Levona? Levona, who was came in.
The most critic in the dining room.
The what?
Most tough guy. He's the most tough person in the dining room.
So I, yeah, so I don't know at this point.
Right, what he's gonna do?
Well, I, I think he's, he's considering the matter closed at this point, because of the discussions that we had, and I, I sent out the meeting minutes for those. So those, you know, those discussions obviously are on record, but I'm not sure. I didn't think that the meeting minutes reflected that everything was okay.
His meeting minutes did.
Well, no, the meeting minutes are on record, say that we had questions about the image and we were asking for more information. So...
But we can do that again, it's not...
We still haven't gotten it, as far as I know.
So what did he say, as far as the whole invitation back, what's he done, just through email, so what do you feel?
What do you mean?
Like the question about the curving being, gonna be set back to a closure?
Oh, yeah, that was on me.
That's on, so he wasn't planning to come visit?
He said that was a mistake, the, the Indian guy did it accident or did it on his own, so...
And then by the time they noticed that the asphalt factory for coldest for the wind dials, so they didn't do it or something like that?
Yep, which that, that part's fine, that makes sense, but, I mean, I think we're still looking at, we're gonna make some changes on the plan, the approval. They were gonna try to, try something for change the sidewalks to gain access back and forth from the yogurt place to Cumberland Farms. And I don't know whether those got corrected.
Is that work done?
No.
They just paid the...
Yeah, I don't think that's done.
I mean, I don't remember where we settled on his site plan review, like what it's supposed to be, you know? I think the last time we came in, we told him that his site plan was sort of null and void because he broke it all up, given it to Cumberland Farms, and he had to start over or whatever, you know, sort of bring it up to being updated, and he, I think, I don't, I don't imagine he was comfortable with that, but that was sort of the, there was a misunderstanding, we told Cumberland Farms as your representative here that they were gonna have to go back to you and tell you that your company, your site plan had been updated because they were only handling that portion, I mean, I think that's part of the minutes.
Right, and that's, and that's why I don't know how he gets, comes to the assumption that everything's okay. And my theory is that the building inspector gives him an occupancy permit on the frozen yogurt place, so maybe what we do is we tell the building inspector that we need to get finalization of the ASB plan, we need to have closure on the site plan review before he issues even a temporary certificate of occupancy on progress.
Okay.
Is that why?
I don't think he's done, I think that that wouldn't be sold down right now.
Well, I think he's...
A month or two.
Well, I'm in Oroshe, it's been since two thousand and twelve, it's been five years that we've been waiting for this, so a month is not gonna kill me, or two months isn't gonna kill me, but as long as he goes...
Someone review over like last year.
It's gonna be quick.
You want to, yeah.
It's gonna bother him in a month, the business.
Right, but the idea is that he's gonna wanna get started, so let's give him, send it to the building inspector, C C, Andy, Sarabian, and just say, we need to get some evidence, some documentation that it's built according to the plan, and please provide the plan.
Do you wanna go that far, say we need the ASB, and you wanna say, we need to know, update your plan to what you're doing?
Well, we haven't, we haven't got approved final plan, so there's some questions to that.
Regardless of ASB, unless you wanna let him go and say, document it on an ASB, but don't issue a occupancy until the ASB's complete.
No, 'cause I don't, I'm not exactly, I don't truly remember, that's why I was hoping to find the plans, I don't truly remember that the plans were not changed, they could have been changed so that what he's calling his rain gardens are really bonded things, but I thought we gotta set an electronic version of some plans, that show the detail and it shows it going down instead of going up, and I mean, it's, if that's the case, then it's easy to figure out, but if it's not the case, then we need to know what the design for drainage is supposed to be.
Right, no, I mean, I don't know what his current plans are because of the Cumberland Farms is the latest plan I recall, and then the, then we did that little sketch up, the intersection.
Right, and that's what, and he's gonna submit another, like a set for site plan review, I thought, but he saw it as he was all set by giving us that sketch and everything's okay.
So I, I guess, we probably have to come up with a concrete request of him, otherwise he's, he's not gonna volunteer.
Well, yeah, 'cause I, well, I like that, because I think, you know, in, in the approval letter that he would have received, there certainly would have been a condition in there about, you know, us needing to receive the final ASB, have the final review before, you know, issuing the, the occupancy permit, the bylaw. And then so it's something concrete that...
Yeah, I think we, we have to give him something to do, he's not gonna sort of do his best, you know?
As part, and so we say as part of the ASB, that he show us what the proposed drainage treatment is supposed to be and, and show us that that's been implemented.
In, and in, in the whole place, not just over where he's paving?
Right, right, for that whole front area, because the...
Not just in the front area?
Right, because the liquor store was a portion, and then they did all the paving for the liquor store, and then we left it sitting, but I don't think they completed the drainage part for the liquor store, then they changed the front portion where Cumberland Farms went, and Cumberland Farms addressed all their drainage on their site. So the altered area behind Cumberland Farms and on this southern lot, still going to the old drainage, which I don't think was completed per approval. So we wanna see the approved plans for the liquor store from back in two thousand and eleven, maybe?
Pre Cumberland Farms, at all.
Right, so does that make sense, if you're...
I mean, do we need to see those, or we just need...
Well, we need to see them, so...
We just need to know what he's working to.
Right, but we need to see what was approved prior and see if that's gonna get...
What do we have those things?
I just looked here, but didn't even visit, we should have them, and I think we do somewhere, but because of the move from different locations, it's not where it should be. It's not under S, but it could be under another different ownership, do you remember?
He's always been the guy, hasn't he?
Yeah, but I wasn't sure if it was under Yachesa Plaza.
Oh.
Which is in the same borough as the S Sarabian group as well, I wasn't in the draw there, but there's some other role plans and we just have to do some planning organization.
Some side work, digging?
Yeah, so I think that's...
Okay, so let it, it just says, per the construction letter.
Yeah.
We need your, for the approval, we need your, whatever, if you had one, the occupancy.
Yeah. All signed.
Dave, I have a comment.
I have a question, how many parking spots is allowed in that, that little section where he's...
The frozen parking?
Huh?
The frozen parking?
Yeah, how many parking spots are allowed in there?
I thought he had sixteen spaces.
Yeah, it doesn't look like there's sixteen spaces.
No, it doesn't, because he constructed a new e-...
Exit?
Yeah, and that's where they're supposed to be parked.
The thing is that, this is just my opinion, after going over there and looking at it, you know, myself, just trying to, just trying to visualize, I think it's gonna be the same spots that we have there, there, that's why people getting in and getting out, because it's two, there's a potential for two businesses there, okay, one is the frozen, you know, we don't know how well that's gonna do, okay? And depending on what the second business is, you don't know how well, you know, what that is, or how that's gonna do, I just think it's gonna cause a lot of commotion of getting in, similar to what happened at Gerardo's before they made the...
Well, the good thing about this, like, at least it doesn't exit directly into a...
No, I understand, I understand that, but what I'm saying though is, is that people trying to come in and people trying to get out, that's why when he, when they made that second driveway, you know, at first I thought, oh my God, why are they doing that, but then after going back there and looking at it and trying to visualize how it seems to me as though that second driveway is kind of like a good thing, because people can come out a different way. You know, they can't go in, but they can come out, I just think that with the way the parking is, I don't know how it's gonna be, but I think it's gonna be a real confusion, people trying to get in, people trying to get out, especially on a Saturday or Friday night or Saturday or something, I don't know, maybe it's just...
No, I agree, and I think that was, we talked about it a lot when we were doing that little...
Because I mean, what would happen is at, at Dairy Queen, you know, on a Friday or Saturday night?
And they have two entrances, they have an entrance and a exit.
They're all on the wall.
Right, but then also, a lot of the problems, Dairy Queen is the drive through... Right, but then also, a lot of the problems, Dairy Queen is the drive-through and this will not have a drive-through.
No, I understand that, but I'm just saying, because of the tight quarters, you know, people trying to come in, people trying to come out, I think it's going to be a little bit of a, you know, that's why I thought that when they built the second, when they made the second driveway, I thought that that was going to be used for people coming out of the parking, so people could go in one way and come out the other way.
I still, I don't think there's enough parking, but our bylaws only require a certain number of parking and it's not, it's based on retail use, not anything more than that.
So each business has a certain amount of parking spaces?
Right. And so what might happen is that people are going to end up having to park down by...
Couple of farms.
Vivian's or somewhere. In that lot between the Vivian building and this building and walk up.
That's horrible.
Or the market.
If they learn that they get stuck in and someone parks in and they can't back out, or like we said, which I didn't really like, because we changed the alignment of that entrance, people are going to now have to back out into the people coming in and going out, those spaces are going to get, have problems. So they're going to get blocked in probably, so that if I get blocked in once or twice and I like the yogurt, I'm going to park somewhere else and just walk over. It's only a hundred feet or a couple hundred feet.
By that time, you have the notice.
It'll be summertime, it'll be nice.
Remember when we were talking and we talked about the sidewalk going over to checkerboard?
No.
Over on the...
Yep, along the road.
He said no.
I know he said no, but he's got, he's got this little, he's not a seating area, but like a paved patio area that goes almost all the way over. I mean, if you were to continue...
He could easily have done it. Actually, if you got on the roadside of the garden reality, there's enough space for a sidewalk.
Was that approved on the plan? That new patio?
Oh, the patio.
The patio, I don't think.
I'm not sure. I hope if it, if it wasn't on the approved plan, then that seating area for restaurant.
It's not seating, it's just a patio.
Is that, that yogurt place is supposed to open June?
Yep, so that's why I think we'll get a good response.
All right, so I'll respond, send it to the building inspector, copy Mr. Serayim, I'll take it from there. All right, moving on, discussion of completion of site plan review process and approved coordination with the building department. So I think this is a follow-up to, you know, the chair actually sent along to the building inspector, has to do with, you know, the occupancy permits being issued before final ASBIL review and certificate of completion.
You do have some stuff in you.
You know, that.
Not you, just Chris. You know, I wasn't copying you all.
I saw this from someone. That was a CO.
That's a little, I was at our panel.
So we got copies of the COs, but we wanted to get certificate of completions. And to get a certificate of completion, we could have the ASBIL and the engineer's.
So, I mean, so for those, I mean, I guess we can just follow up with the individual applicants at this point, right?
Well, I could follow up with him. He's, he's still, he hasn't provided us with the ASBILs or the certifications from the engineers. He's on it, or the, or the certificate of completion. He gave us the certificate of occupancy.
Okay.
So he is supposed to issue a certificate of completion.
Yeah, certificate of completion.
And then what do you base the certificate of completion on? Especially in the 99 Hartwell Street case where they're still in construction and they changed the whole front of the building, which is going to change more parking.
Yeah.
So there's some serious problems.
Yep, and so that was another one. Mr. Deverdy reached out to me earlier this week, I think it was Monday or Tuesday, I can't recall what day it was. But he was mentioning that he was under the impression that, again, he had the CO from the building inspector, so the site plan review process, you know, was complete. And then at that point, the changes to the parking were sort of under the authority of the building inspector. So that, that was the feedback. He did mention that, he said he thinks the change in the impervious was... That he, he made some impervious in one area, but, but increased impervious in a different area, and so it sort of netted up.
That was building inspector or Deverdy?
No, that was Mrs. Deverdy.
But I think, I agree that he may believe all these things, like, what was his name here for?
Mr. Fuller.
Mr. Fuller, he had the same understanding that he was going through everything right, but the building inspector is not enforcing and implementing.
So, yeah, it's a session. So I mentioned that, that, you know, at a minimum, we're going to need, you know, updated plans here, we're going to need to do the final ASBIL review.
And he's, yeah, he's going to be all bent out of shit.
All of that.
Because I think the drainage, because he thinks he balanced the drainage between what was impervious and what's pervious. He's got change in access, he's got, because he's got garages, garage days, so he's changing the layout.
Has he changed essentially? So he's doing a...
No, I asked him that, same one.
Same, so back to...
Still, what was his name?
Quinian.
Still Quinian.
They're usually pretty good. It's just that they need to be asked to do something. They can't do it on their own.
Right, they're going to do that drainage calculation just to make it real.
And then VHB's going to have to review it. I mean, unless the building inspector can do the review and certify, which I'm pretty sure can't.
So I mentioned to him on the phone, I don't get back to him, he's due back from the board after this meeting tonight.
Deverdy?
Yes. So again, maybe this is another one where we sent an email to the building inspector asking for those similar things, copying listed Deverdy.
Well, I think we have a list and copied Mr. Deverdy on that as well, because there's a whole list of what we sent out the first time, of all the different sites.
Yep.
And none of them forgot what they were looking for.
Yep.
So it's all the same thing from the building inspector. But for Mr. Deverdy, I would suggest that he, as far as we're concerned, the site plan review isn't closed, because if it is closed, then he has to do a new site plan application, which is twice the cost. So I would prefer that we keep it as an amended site plan.
Then he doesn't have to have a cluttered...
Well, yeah, so we can minimize, or we can see that. If it isn't an extensive change, then we would have a site plan, you know, public hearing. But if he does it as a new, if he thinks he's closed the site plan review, then you have to have a whole public hearing and the whole, everything else.
So it's starting to have the fees and VHB review.
Yeah, yeah, so I don't think he's going to like that, and I don't know that we need it, but if he's saying he's closed, then it's closed.
You could put the building inspector on and say, "Well, if you say it's closed, then you..."
Well, it's got to be a certificate of completion. I don't think the building inspector issued any certificate of completion on any of them.
Just talking about just the COs.
I think last meeting, we talked about bringing the building inspector here to the meeting.
Yeah, he was invited. I think he responded to Cheryl, I didn't see her response. Yeah, but her email said this meeting or next meeting, so he may be planning to come.
He's, he's already trained two days, yesterday and today. Today and tomorrow in partner.
All right, so again, I'll follow up, post-it in fashion there.
Like the same.
Yeah, it's, it's the same issue.
And there's a whole bunch of them, yes.
So I'll follow up, you know, accordingly with the...
She's...
Can you CC Anita on this tip? Because the, the issue that's coming up is that we've got people who are trying to do the right thing, they're getting poor direction in the building office, and then they're having to do things twice.
Yeah, who is, who's the assistant in the building office? She's good.
She's very good, but...
Cheryl?
Is it Cheryl? What's her name?
Kate?
Yeah.
Yes.
I'll be here too, just to make sure.
Right, because everything usually gets copied through her, so it stays.
Yeah.
Because we've asked four times now for the same information?
Well, yeah, but...
No.
I mean, but if he's, if they supply, when he thinks he's supposed to be supplying, that might be a problem too.
Oh, yeah, the other topic that came up too was the issue of VHB. So they did receive a quote-unquote ASBIL, but VHB didn't do it because it was missing some information.
Well, it wasn't an ASBIL.
And he had, he had questions about that, so, you know.
Who?
VHB saying, you know, "I'm not sure what's missing. This is the kind of thing that's been in the lines for other towns and it's a lot of problem, and so I don't understand what's missing." I thought there was at some point a punch list that maybe Wayne or somebody had.
Wayne put together.
So this is what's missing.
Exactly, he said, "This is what's missing." What they submitted to the board was a survey. There was no stamp that said ASBIL, there was no certification that everything was built according to the plan. It was just, "This is a survey that was done, didn't show underground, like all the drainage that was done."
For which project?
Hours, 99 hours.
The UPS.
Yep.
So we didn't get what was needed. VHB replied in a timely manner, and I think that was over a year ago.
It was a while ago.
And we haven't, and so we haven't even gotten a response with questions that, "We don't understand this" or anything like that. It's just, "Oh, I thought it was done." And then those who did get a reply.
I'll see if I can find that punch list and try to send that along as well to move things along.
Where are you going to do it?
Before Julie's next. There's only one more meeting left.
So be busy one more meeting.
As you like.
Get it down. All right, so then we'll just track forward to all the submissions, ZDA. All right, so I think all those need to be followed up similarly.
Of course.
I'll go ahead and do that. Next on the agenda is the land news chapter. Now, Sue already helped us out a little bit with that. I did send along yesterday a sort of somewhat abbreviated version of the previously partially updated chapter.
Good question.
So I particularly, I specifically included sort of the track changes, so folks can see the changes that were done, I think, back, Leon was here, and you went through some of this, we'd seen on our PC. And then there's also a few, you know, a few minor changes that I added as well. One of the ones that I added was just talking about the exemption with the one and a half percent land area.
Okay, yeah.
That's, that's at least in there.
It's already fine, interesting.
But it's not in this format.
Yeah, but they're changing the format, so...
So I don't know if there's, you know, comments or, I mean...
No, you're correct.
It was a case for you.
First of all.
Why don't we talk about it next meeting?
There was a meeting after that and then you're off.
That was good off my back.
Yeah.
All right, so, fine, but we'll move back to the next meeting. Good. See, now we're making progress, I like this. All right, on consideration of boards and members who have senior center projects.
No, no.
And this. Hopefully folks received the PowerPoint slides that I sent along from Anita, that has a summary of, you know, a lot of the questions and issues. Perfect, you're good. You're good.
Some days.
Yeah, all right, so, so we've got the slides. Folks have comments, suggestions?
You're asking me?
Anybody and everybody.
Why is it so expensive?
That's a good question.
Why is it so expensive? Why would police station come out?
Number one, it's, all the projected values are for next two years. The police station is done in two months. Right? So this project, we have to go get that over from the town. First, surface two, then go to the bid architectural, IRA architect, IRA OPM, and then go get a bid ready document, get the bid, and then go to another town meeting, town election, to get the remainder of the five point for some money.
Why is it...
Then start construction.
Just because in the police station, you went to the town meeting once, you got money, and then came back and got more money? This doesn't need to be an habit.
It's not a habit, you know, to be cautious. So we could burn once, so we don't have to...
So no planning on it.
Yeah, but we want to have a bid ready document, so then you go out for bid.
Yeah.
And then get the bids, you have to know the dollar value, more, that will, that will tell all the critics in the town, critics, yes, all who were having a, you know, doubt about the project, it will give you the exact number. This is the bid. It's not going to increase more than 5.4 million or 5.5 million or whatever the bid amount can be, and then I will give it to you. That's it. This is the money we want, so that's the final money. We are not giving, we are not, the committee is not, you know, whatever the bid, that's the final amount. Nothing will be changed after that.
Yeah, because it's so...
Unless and otherwise, you know, if there is any humongous, like, something drastic shing the staff, like when they did the ground, you know, if you have more of the rocks or something, they'll use more money. But that also, you know, there is a contingency, and also a two-year escalation, so that's a fair estimate, that's a good educated estimate given by the RPIs, you know? That's the reason it's a little higher. So, but if you don't do it now...
It'll be even higher.
It will be even higher in the following year. And also you will be getting, you are getting older too. You need to see yourself.
But I'm going to start forgetting more and I'm not going to be as concerned.
Yeah, but somewhere we have to go, right? You are not going to sit at home, watch the TV, how long you watch.
Yeah, well, just, when it comes to use, was there a song on the town website?
So...
Like a question, a follow-up question. They had 7,800 people visit the senior center. How many actual individuals have visited the senior center is the question. I thought it was 338 or something like that, but I don't remember the number exactly. I wasn't sure if you knew that.
7,800 people is how many people actually went through there for a year. Repeat that.
Now, the...
They would, they would say me, I would say that for four years.
Right, and so I understand that, but there was also a number on the town website that was a response to a question, that how many individuals have visited the site, like, not repeat.
Well, that's 7,800 people is actual people that actually...
What was the number of...
I don't know people.
It was in the town website, it was on the town website.
I don't read the town website.
So somewhere on there, when she followed up questions on the...
I would give it to you, but...
Because that was, I didn't remember the number when I put it in my comments. So I remember the 78%, but I thought it was less than a thousand.
You are right.
Well, 7,800 people go 10 times, it's what, 70? 30 times is 350?
366.
So it's 366 people that ended up going in Manhattan, total, 7,800 times.
Okay, I could answer this way. Because of the condition of this current senior center, a lot of seniors are hesitant to go there, and also the current senior center, according to date, only 49 people. That's the capacity. So if one person goes beyond, if, you know, regulation, code regulation, whatnot, and also there is no window, there is no good kitchen, there is the, because of the limited space, 3,500 square feet. So the current senior center.
Yes.
Not too many people goes.
Yeah, no, I'm fine with it.
There's a senior center, that's 300, because what was the number they're saying? That could be only from Angel Grove, 300. Whatever, we have the hillside, we have other seniors, we do have a seniors like around What about, we have the hillside, we have other seniors, we do have a seniors like around two thousand seniors at town. So the total population, including the jail, is around eight thousand. But it will take us two thousand jail, six thousand, out of six thousand, there are two thousand of them, are seniors.
Yep.
So the remainder of four thousand is, you know, the general population.
So what I'm saying is, you know, if we have two thousand seniors, one of those like talks about Rockland.
Yeah, that's thirteen.
So they have like a three thousand seniors, but before they build the senior center, there is a nice graph of that.
Seven thousand people.
So the multiple visits like this drastically increased.
And we would hope that, that's a good, that's a good thing.
It will increase. It's the same, no, it's the same thing for the senior center of the Sterling. So in Rockland, Rockland, Mass, in that, two thousand fourteen, seven thousand nine hundred and fifty-one people were visited the senior center. This is repeated visits. So their senior population is three thousand four hundred and eight. Whereas our senior population is two thousand.
Two hundred and sixty-seven.
Yeah, I have a graph to be exact. Two thousand ten is eighteen, eighteen hundred and ninety-five. Is two thousand, I would say, let's take this, two thousand fifteen is two thousand two hundred and sixty-seven. Okay? So these two thousand two hundred and sixty-seven visits, so that could triple or double or triple. We have a new senior center. So again, all, most seniors goes to other centers. You know, they are going to Sterling, they are going to Uster, they are going to Northboro, Westboro, all those seniors. Some people goes to all the way to Auburn to use a senior center. So if not, they will be sitting at home, watching T V, how long they can, they have to interact with people. They have to be active, you know. So, and also it's a town building. It's not somebody's, somebody want the building. It's a town building, town assets, you know. If you don't build it now, the price will go up.
Be ten million.
So they are.
I agree that the price of the same thing would go up. My question is, is where do we, I mean, the sizing of it. What's the size of the Sterling one?
Sterling's sixty-five hundred, but they are, it's been one year.
Yeah.
They're already talking about more, more space.
That makes sense, but going from sixty-five hundred to ten thousand five hundred, which is what we're looking at. That's almost doubling.
It's good for, yeah, it's good for, you know, near future. Can I predict how many years it will be good? But, you know, it will be good for the near future, I would say, the same word. So it could be for five years, ten years, twenty years. So with a population like this, yes.
Well, I guess the questions that I come up with is.
Why ten thousand square feet?
Right.
This is based on some calculations, elder affairs. If there is a senior, one senior, this much space, this much square. But we didn't go that high level, that is based on the size of, based on the programs, based on the need. It's not the want, it's the need. If it is a senior center, what is the need? How much is the general area? How much is the kitchen area we need? So considering, you know, in the near future.
Yeah.
We cannot predict like in twenty, how many seniors will be there, you know.
Yeah.
So that's an estimate. So with that need, this many rooms we need, activity rooms, this many, we need a bathroom, we need a health room. All those things with that, they came up with the minimum, this much is the best. If we go, we can go lesser than that, but we'll end up building again or expanding again within a couple of years. So that's, you know.
Yeah, so I know those are the options and things people consider and I understand it's probably been a lot of work that hasn't been visible. So that's, that's a good thing. You mentioned that Sterling is expanding. Is there a way, has anyone talked to Sterling so that we?
Yeah, but they don't want us. They don't want us.
Have we talked?
Yes.
The question is that we talk to them officially and said, we'd like to.
And they don't want nothing to do. They don't want a conversion or anything.
I'm not saying, what do you think, you know, there's, in this place, don't you think we need, we need to have our own senior center rather than go to a, another place? Another town?
I don't know if we do.
Don't you think the senior, the service?
They can't get grants. They can't get grants. If it's, if it's a community center, if it's a senior center, then the council meeting, the director can go over and get grants for the senior center. But if it's a community center, then those grants that would be available for senior centers would not be available.
Are they getting them?
So the grants, the grants are, you know, all the grants, you can get it, there are many grants.
Grants are operational stuff or like to build?
Uh, there was, in the state, community compact grant, there is one there. But I'm not sure they give us for the construction, capital investment. But I do know that there is one foundation that it does use for the building in senior centers, capital investment. But they want to make sure we have all the architecture plan ready, town approved architect.
So that'll do construction, that'll do engineering.
They don't want to say, I'm building a senior center. This is the money with their conceptual plan, they won't answer any grant applications. They need to have the town approved, bid ready, bid documents, you know, bid, all the architect plans, all the plans. So then only they will consider. But also, you know, we don't know how much they will give us, you know, is it a million, is it two million, it's a?
Hopefully it's five and a half million.
Yeah, who knows? You know, if you get a five and a half million, if the town approves for five and a half million, you wouldn't be spending it.
Right. And I don't care that, you know.
The grants, grants are something, you know, it's sitting there, it's not the reach, but it's not in our hands, it's up there.
It is.
Until you get it, you know, we don't know.
Yeah, but if that's the case, then we shouldn't, we shouldn't not have it be a community center because we don't have something yet.
So if you have any, if you, if you put it like, based on the conversation, if you put it at a community center, you get nothing.
We don't.
Where did you get that information?
Who said that?
As a community center, you would be, if you would work towards, like I was asking in the, in the suggestion or thoughts, if we can do something to the fields, then there's funding potentially through open space and recreation, through the Department of Conservation and Recreation. They tend to spend in, like whether it's design or other things, when we did the Goodyear Park Master Plan, I checked with them, whatever it was, four years, five years ago, and they would have funded that at fifty percent. So instead of the town spending fifty thousand dollars, we only would have had to spend twenty-five thousand, got the same project.
And why did we do that?
Because no one applied to it, no one looked into it.
Okay, so if we don't.
So that's why I don't want to go down the same road where, oh, we're too far down the road, we can't make this change. We're at the point now where we're writing the architectural standards, put it in their contract, they're going to apply for grants and suggest that these grants might be available. Whether they get them or not, you don't really know. But if you can work everything together and really plan when you're doing this, we're not just building a building. It's thirteen and a half acres out there where there are fields that could be done. There's, I think, fifty or sixty house blocks buddingness on Horseshoe Drive area. All those properties, if there was a small playground, a pocket playground as they call it, which there's funding through the open space and recreation stuff, built in the back corner of the thirteen acres or right next to the building, it doesn't really matter.
I also think the town meeting would be more likely to improve.
More support.
Right.
But I haven't seen that support. What I saw on community, the only thing that comes up when this was discussed was it could be a community center by having the elections held. I haven't really seen any other work that's supposed to help.
There is, you know, if we want to have a planning board meeting for that, because, public, it's allowed. You can bring in your own stuff.
Well, we can have a planning board meeting out at the Angel Brook site. I mean, that doesn't mean.
Public.
Yes, we can.
Public.
Well, yes, we felt it.
It's a private.
It's private, it's got a homeowners association, but it's still public.
But no, it's a private. You have to get permission to do it.
Yes.
So they, they don't have to grant it to you.
Yeah.
That's true, but we can hold it anywhere. It's not as though this.
This is a town building.
Yeah.
Any of the town activities, town committees, town department, they can, they can use the facility.
Yeah.
When the senior center is not being used.
The seniors, yeah. Yeah, that makes, that's perfect sense.
So if you want to have a town election, you can do it.
You have to have elections.
Separation of church and the state.
I think because the seniors are the volunteers at the elections, this would be the appropriate place to have the elections.
Yes.
Because the seniors, they are volunteer.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, I like having it as a community.
Even now we have soccer, the club over there.
Soccer stuff, you can have boy scouts, you can have girl scouts, meetings, all that stuff, so.
It's on, it's on slide twelve. Can we have a car show?
We may not have it, this, this is not.
In the garden.
Yes.
Do a cruise night.
A cruise night at the senior center.
Is there a movie night, planning board movie night?
No, seniors, current, personal. Yeah?
So I.
No, he can do that, he can do that.
Where was the other?
He had the question.
So as far as the area of the building, somewhere they came up with some numbers, so that's alright.
Thirteen point seven, the total area is thirteen point seven.
But I think what we come down to is when we go to town meeting, town meeting's looking at five and a half million dollars for just the building, the construction costs, plus the one, whatever is one point one, one point two for the design services. If we go and we get that at town meeting, we put a bid proposal out there, the contractors know the town meeting approved five point whatever million. Bid prices are not going to be much less than that. That's, they're going to see that number and they're going to just use that number as that's where, that's our target. They're going to compete a little bit against each other, but it's not as though, once you have that number up there in the public, that it gets reduced. If we say and we start off, we want to propose this as being a four million dollar senior center, then that's what we're going to get, is a four million dollar senior center. So I'm, I'm hesitant at the prices because we have, we have.
Maybe we should have.
So even now, when you say that prices, so the last time, there was an estimate, the town did go to the town meetings and asked for the money, approved the money. Then when they want, when they want to go back, I'm talking about the police station.
Yeah.
Yeah, because even more.
Yeah, low bar, you know, very, very low price. And the first, the conceptual architect, who did, who gave the estimate, he did not bid on the real.
On the design services.
Design space.
Right.
So that was a disaster to avoid that. So we got, this is so it's a design by the Caitlin and the other group, ten thousand dollars conceptual plan. With that, he gave us the estimate.
Right, and he said, so that's, he's confident on, confident on that estimate. So that's what we want. The first one, police station, the guy didn't have experience in police stations.
He is confident. This estimate was run through the, our current O P M. And also he checked it, double-checked it, and he, whatever the, you know.
So he agreed with the numbers from the architect or did he jack those up some?
Uh, I don't know exactly, but there is a little difference.
So, I mean, that's what I'm looking at is that a senior center is definitely needed in town, there's no question about that, I'd like to get one. But I don't want to get a gold-plated one. I want something that's going to serve the needs, as it says in one of these slides, and provide for the seniors. I'm not that far off myself, so.
Say, suppose now, if you don't build it now, now it is six point, the estimate is six point four.
Well, I'm not saying don't build it now, but what about building something for forty-five, four and a half million instead of five and a half?
You won't get it? How are you waiting to get it?
Because, because what will happen is if you get something for four million dollars, I guarantee you within five years, you will be putting another addition onto the building.
So can you build it?
I'd rather have someone who's got experience with this.
Can you build it for six point four million, you know? So is it, is it realistic?
How much would it cost Sterling to build theirs?
Sterling is a smaller size, six point five, six point.
Yeah, six. Sixty-five hundred square feet.
Six point four.
For how much?
Uh, somewhere between three, four million dollars.
Three, five thousand.
But again, you know.
Here's the thing, day they opened, they knew it was too small because they had, it was overflowing. Now they're talking.
And also, you know, if you build a job, you expect, the planning and other things, you expect. And also they get some money and so.
If I can just make a point, let me just tell you something, okay, this is my personal opinion, I'm not talking this as council meeting, whatever, my personal opinion. I spent twenty years, twenty years in the military, I traveled around the world, and I'll tell you something. This country has no respect for seniors. They treat their seniors like crap. You go to other countries and seniors are like gods, you know? So the seniors in this town are usually the ones that support everything. They ask for almost nothing in return. They're asking for a senior center, okay? Alright? They're the only ones in this area that doesn't, that do not own a senior center, just like town hall. For twenty years, this town was the only town that did not own their own senior, their own town hall, up until three, four years ago, okay? That five point four million dollars, that's not guaranteed, that's just an estimate. They don't even think they're going to get close to that. It's, what's going to happen is the one point one million is to get the O P M, which is a state law, you have to have an O P M, okay? And the higher architect that's going to take the plant and develop construction plans and come up with a cost. And then they're going to go out for a bid for a developer. So it could come in less than five point four million, you know? They don't think it's going, that's just, that's what happened with the police station. They thought that that was the right cost. They found out after they went through all this, and that's why they decided to do all of this later, you know? To go out and get, and not come out and say, oh, this is what. Now, that one point one million dollars, they may not even have to spend all of that money, okay? They may only have to spend maybe eight, nine hundred thousand. Whatever they don't spend is going to go back into the coffe. It's going to depend on when the architect comes up with plans. This plan here, it's designed, was come courteous, courteous of, courteous.
Caitlin.
Of, no, not just Caitlin, but came from Lisa, the director of Council Beijing, because she's an architect, okay? This was not the golden palace, this was minimal needs of what? The things that they want to do at the senior center to provide, after seeing the disaster that happened at Sterling, at Sterling, okay? And we have more seniors than they do, alright? So this, this is, this is not something that's, you know, oh, you know, we're looking for the Taj Mahal. We're not looking for the Taj Mahal, we're looking for, and we're not, we're not just saying, this is a senior complex that only the seniors are going to use. No, we're going to let, you know, the boy scouts, girl scouts, you know, town meeting, you know, whatever needs to be done. You know, as far as open space, the ballparks are going to stay there, we're not getting rid of the ballparks. We're supporting that, to have the ballparks, you know, redone. Now the property behind it, we're going to hook up to town source come from Horseshoe Drive, okay? Behind there is also a lot of wetlands, so there's not a lot of things that they can do in the wetlands, okay? Yes, you look at it. I'm telling you, if you're working one of these presentations, you know that that's what they're talking about. You know, all of yous are going to be seniors someday, and if you think your kids are going to be taking care of you, you're sadly to say it. So you're thankful that there is a senior plus a place for you guys to go and your wives and whoever to go and associate with other people. Like the three of yous right there, you know, you can go to see, go to the new senior center and say, oh God, I remember back in two thousand seventeen, what a great thing we did. So, you know, look at it from that aspect. Why did the, whoever, why do the seniors not want the church for their senior center? I mean, that was a cheaper. Because it's too steep and it was just, and it was going to cost more money to renovate it than it, than was necessary. There was a lot of problems with the church, that's from my understanding. But it's cheaper overall. But, and besides that, that's property that would have been taken off the tax roll.
It's a church, it's a church, don't give me the tax.
Okay, but it's, but still, it's still property, you know? And the thing is, this is, this is the right, is right in the middle of town, it's a perfect place for it.
Next door is the middle of town?
Well, it's pretty close to the middle of the town, you know? I mean, it's a perfect location.
Anyway, you know, people are going to Auburn.
Yeah, I mean, at least.
It's a lot closer to the town.
It's a lot closer to that.
So what, what is the closest place, in the Newton Street?
No.
Fifty-five Newton Street?
No. I'm fine with the location, I'm fine with all that.
Let me know.
If we're doing a, if we're getting an architect and someone to do design work, I'd like to see the design work of the whole site. And I think that's what you're saying you're going to do, because it's including.
You're saying it, design of the entire site, it costs more, right?
No, they have to, are they going to come to this planning board for a site plan review like the police station did?
Yeah.
That's going to be in the contract? Somebody's going to do that.
They, they have.
So you already said.
So that's site plan review, so that's the same thing that we're, that's the same level that we're looking for. If they're going to be stripping all the loan and all the material and building buildings, putting in an additional parking area, they're going to have a bunch of material. If you have a plan in your hand saying, okay, we kind of have a layout here, we're going to strip this section down, we're going to move the material over to there, move it once, level it off, and then be done with it. Don't they, they remove it, level it off, and then forget that you're. and then forget that you're planning on doing something for a field or something for a playground?
There are so many good ideas. We do have an opening in the FISB.
I can only do one or two boards, I don't want to do too many.
Plan and board some for the FISB.
No, no, no. I'm elected here, so it's easier.
Yeah, yeah.
But, so I would want to see the whole site plan developed and make sure that the site plan gets put through the appropriate required process. The other thing, you did talk about the sewer connection going out to Horseshoe Drive. I thought, and I could be totally wrong, is but I thought the old connection for this property was out through where the police station is.
Oh, that was a sewer, that's a septic tank.
That was a septic.
That was a septic.
That was a sewer.
That was a septic.
What my point is, is that the sewer, the septic that went down there, the connection, I think was still around Route twelve for this volume of service. So just make, when they're going through it, I'm sure they'll go through it, and make sure there's adequate capacity within Horseshoe Drive for this development. That's all they need to do. I mean, I don't.
Because it'd be wonderful if they discovered that they have to dig up the driveway of the police station to run the septic line to the.
That would be terrible, but yes.
That would be a bad.
I mean, hopefully they've already done that and it's been addressed, but I know that the sewer went out, the septic went out that way, and the sewer connection, I think, in Route twelve was there for whatever might go up on this property. And if there's enough at Horseshoe Drive, that's good.
So Mass B O T did approve that drainage things.
Of course.
Yeah?
For the police station.
Don't change the subject.
Okay.
Well, it's, that's fine.
So you will be, the planning board approves, and you will be the one talking?
Presenting.
Presenting. Oh, we, now, do you want to make a motion? Yeah, I make a motion to, no, we haven't approved.
To endorse?
And does the, you know.
My question is, how much?
See, we should have done one of my plan a long time ago. We should have said, we, the planning board endorses the idea that the town should have a senior center, bang, done, over.
That, I agree with you.
Now we have to do this, and it's questionable, and it's expensive, and you have all your questions, this is a disaster.
Yeah, well, the details are always okay, but the idea of having a senior center, I'm absolutely favor that.
I make a motion, the planning board endorses the idea of a senior center anywhere.
Second.
Except over. It's too.
Second, yeah.
Any discussion, I guess?
It's in charge.
Chair, yeah.
Do we want to make the endorsement a little more specific?
That's the discussion.
Yeah, that's, that's my question.
So while endorsing the city plan or the senior center, are we losing everything? Nothing. But we do need the senior center. We do need a senior center. Again, this, the price tag is going to, year by year.
You know, we also need a score.
Don't go to another topic.
But that's going to be more of a.
We're going to need to defer it, and I'm, I'm okay with that, and actually, Dave made some sense when it was the idea of, we're going to get a design done, that design doesn't have to go to five point four million. Right now, it's estimated based on a conceptual. When we get detailed plans, detailed design, it may be that it's four point five. But I, I want to make sure that the intent is to be our needs, not our dream, and that's, and I think that's the design.
This is the need, this is the basic need, it's not the want.
I think you should put in, I think that we should put a, the idea that the developer has to apply for grants. They, they can't say no, it's cheaper to not do it.
Designed.
Designed, whoever can do it, has to apply for grants. It can't be that it's cheaper and faster to not do that, or we don't know if there's a grant or.
I have, I was on a couple of other meetings, and they said, you know, we do have grant writers and now.
Nope, I don't want to.
There's grant writers that are non-professional. If you, if you hire, and this is what, what I was kind of thinking, and I think Mark might be in the same thing, is if you hired an architect or designer, they can take someone who's done this before, or contact CMRPC and contact people who have done this specifically, and if we're going to pay them an extra ten thousand dollars in the design process, in a one point two million dollar contract, for them to go out and get some grants.
I agree, how will they do it?
Who cares?
Is that a, why do they have to?
Put it in there, in the contract for the designer, that they get grants.
They have to bring in this much money?
No, no, you don't know what you're going to bring in. But if we want to do it as an incentive type thing, we say that you're required to go through and find where grants might be applicable, and there's lists of those all around, that's what grant writers do, and then you figure out which ones are the best, most likely to get. You put the application in for those, and let's say it costs you ten thousand dollars in time to do that. That's minuscule money for us in the town.
Yeah, I agree, but at the same time, even if he applies for a grant, why he would be applying, why he will say ten thousand? Is there a, do we need to tell him, you know, you have to apply for this many grants? Or you have to bring in this much money? What is the incentive he is getting?
Well, I don't, well, that's the other incentive is that we can give them.
How we can make him?
We can word it as an incentive that he gets five percent of, or ten percent of whatever grant he gains, which would be great for the town. The town gets a fifty thousand dollar grant, and we have to pay the architect five thousand dollars to get it for us?
Is it allowed in the municipal?
I don't know legal stuff, I'm not an attorney, but if we want to. That's the, that's the idea that I'd like to see people are thinking about, as opposed to, okay, we're going to put this out, we're going to, we need this much money, and we haven't looked at grants, we haven't done this, we haven't done that.
Speaking of that, you know, the, the council on aging and the Friends Group, they, they are talking about, you know, fundraising of various different methods, pushing out to you, ask for some.
I can, I can bake cookies for a bake set.
Bigger donations, you know? Get down to the basement, get all the money out, give to us, like that.
So they. Oh, I'm sure, and that's a great thing, I know the seniors are going to work hard, they really can support us. But I mean, I talked to probably a handful, six or eight seniors, who think it's pretty expensive, and you look at the average costs on the tax bills, it's higher upfront. So the seniors that are around now, they're going to get hit with a higher tax bill, they're going to get the benefit as well, but the tax bill is really going to hit them in the next five or ten years.
How we can avoid, how, how can we avoid? Is there any idea, how can we avoid without a tax?
Well, I don't know, we need, I don't think we need to avoid. We need to show that we're giving them the best bang for their buck. And I haven't seen that in the documentation that I've got.
So the building a new senior center is not in a the thing you want to see? What else you want to see?
No, I would like, I'd love to have a senior, a new senior center. But if a new senior center is going to cost me five million dollars and it's going to cost me two and a half million dollars to be part of Holden and there's enough space, then why not go to Holden?
But nobody wants us, nobody wants to allow us. But they did explore that. They did explore that option.
Well, it should be, I mean, I would have thought that would be in here.
Not at all, they're not involved, they're not installing, nobody wants us.
Does Boylston have their own?
Very small.
Small one. You know what, but it's, but it is there. No, we don't, we get paid like a forty thousand dollars for the rented space every year.
Oh, down to the current one? Yeah, so I mean, I saw in the operating expenses, that was good, I liked seeing operating expenses, because a lot of times it's, it's going to be magically taken care of. We need to do a lot more, a lot more maintenance on our existing buildings and existing facilities.
So again, you know, the cost is high because of the prevailing wedge, how can we get rid of that?
Buy a church.
And renovate, well, I mean, that's it.
Or have the church renovated before you buy it.
And then, I mean, it's, you can always look back, I mean, now Checkerboard is leasing, that would be a nice central area. The VFW, is it the VFW or the Legion Hall, whichever the one is over by the gourmet donuts, they were chomping at the bit to try to get us to go in there, and they were going to do all the renovations.
Most of us didn't done, you know.
And for some reason, they didn't, they didn't go that way, and I don't know why, but I assume that the people on the FISB have the reasons, and that's why I kind of was hoping to see a little more on the front end of, we looked at all these different things.
There was a comment, they did look at all the available spaces.
But Checkerboard wasn't available until a month ago.
Yeah.
That's pretty much.
You're talking about another warehouse.
Yeah.
And there's no windows.
So it just looks like, you know, you're jumping from the frying pan to the fire.
It's more central, it's closer than a home.
Yeah, big fire, right?
Well, I mean, but the trouble is, and I know, because we run into it on the open space and other things, you get forty-five different options, there's so many different things. But if you've already gone through the process and you've gone through the review of the Legion Hall or the VFW. Let's see it, I mean, put it in the presentation so that, okay, we have all these, we put out a bid for whatever a building and facility, we got three people, three property owners that came back positive. We investigated those three, and none of them were reasonable, because such and such. It's just showing the work that's been done, because I haven't really been following, and maybe it's shame on me, but I haven't followed what the FISB has done, um, to get to this point.
FISB is working that, or from the last?
And I think there are good people on the FISB, and they do good hard work, but I don't know it until someone explains it or shows it to me, and I, I know it's a public meeting and I could go and attend, but.
It's also in YouTube, you know, you can watch the.
On your phone.
I could see.
On your phone. If you have.
If I could, right.
Objected form.
My phone, right.
Not a tablet.
That's right.
So why, why is this a different situation than the church time? Like, when we went to town meeting with the church, and the seniors voted it down, why do we think this is, this is the opposite? This is a bigger place and more expensive? And nothing, I mean, nothing wrong with it, but I'm, I'm wondering why we think this is a different situation than the last time we came forward with the.
Last time, you know, even a lot of people are not, the location, the building, they didn't make it.
Okay.
And the driveway, it's going out of the town, it's going out of the town.
This is about the same distance out of town as that's.
Same distance from the center of town, just about. Oh, no, actually, it's not.
I mean, that's a four-ten mile, but.
Yeah.
It's close a mile.
It's going, we're going out, you know?
Yeah, I live at Sterling, it's two and a half miles further, so.
So.
Why do we think it's going to be different?
So this is our town-owned land, right? And also your brand-new building, which is just enough for the need, whereas that one is an older building, even if you buy it for that kind of money, we do need to renovate, we do have tons of other spaces where they're, more than what they needed. So that's, and also the, the location is not desirable. The building is not desirable. The, the high tension wires are running on the top of the things, parking lot is very bad.
I mean, I'm, I'm wondering if we can't find.
It's not me, it's not me, the town did not approve it, that building.
Yeah, but when, when we were there, at the meeting, the, what's the boards that you're, the senior group?
Council ladies.
Council ladies. Weren't they a hundred percent in favor?
I don't know, I was on Council Beijing at that time.
Who was the guy that got up and talked? I mean, he got, he was in favor of it. But Boris Leighton was in favor of it, and then it was kind of a surprise that it didn't go through. I'm wondering.
I think it's, the town meeting, it was approved, Tom Alexson, is it town meeting?
Didn't get approved at town.
Town meeting, it didn't?
No, it didn't.
Because it needs two-thirds, right?
Yeah. Yeah, two-thirds, and it was, but it was like the seniors that didn't want it. I'm just wondering if they're going to find something that they don't want in this, like the cost.
Until we go to the meeting, you know, we don't know, town meeting.
Well, that's what I was wondering, asking why the logic is.
Cost is, cost is not by the board of FISB. It's not set by the FISB or any board, it's set by the, given the estimate was given by the architect.
I'm not, I'm not saying it's anybody's thing to do. I'm wondering why you think it's kind of, I don't know, maybe it's, it's rhetorical.
I don't know, until you go to the meeting.
I mean, because I, I agree that that's, that's going to be a big issue, because we pay for the police station, it was what, three fifty a square foot? And if it's a senior center, it's going to be four hundred?
Four hundred and eight dollars. That's quite.
I'll give you the eight dollars, but, four hundred.
Oh, that's a good money, you know, ten thousand, three hundred, ten hundred feet.
So you're looking at a different value. No, no, just for calculations, but I guess, I, when I think of a police station, it's got equipment, it's got like more expensive facilities than a senior center, it's going to, I mean, okay, it's going to have a kitchen, and then, but then it's just got a couple of meeting rooms and a big open room, so.
They need it now, not the, the, answering the the, of, this will be approved only after one or one and a half years, then, when it is done and we'll go to construction stage. You know, not this town meeting. The next is sometime in a special town meeting in October or November, almost.
No, no, I'm just, I'm just wondering, but your estimate.
Two years, two years away. The estimate is two years away.
Okay.
Time to build our site, they are talking about two thousand nineteen and two thousand twenty, completion.
So that's including inflation.
Yeah, inflation.
Six percent.
Inflation continues to, almost, it's a error.
So let's go, I'm not that fast, I could at math, but let's say three hundred and fifty, it's, it's four hundred is a lot more than twelve percent of, a hundred and twelve percent of three and fifty.
The police station's four hundred and fifty.
Four hundred and fifty dollars a square foot. That was three fifty, huh?
Four hundred, five point two million dollars divided by eleven thousand five hundred fifty-five square feet, comes out to four hundred and fifty, fifty dollars.
Yeah, if you do this out, let's, this will be.
We broke up, let's say eleven thousand.
Eleven thousand five hundred fifty-five. That's the gross size of the building.
Where did I hear? Three thousand, three hundred and fifty.
You were saying it's only the cost of construction?
Did you take the final cost and it's going to cost five point two million dollars to build the, the police station, and you take that divided by the eleven thousand five hundred fifty-five, comes out to four hundred and fifty dollars a square foot?
Good.
So.
Well, then that, that makes more sense to me, that's.
But the thing is, but you have to understand, time, there's more construction going on now. So there's more construction going on, that means the prices are going up. The longer, the longer you wait, the more the price is going to go up. They figured six percent increase each year for the next three years.
And I can understand that, six percent increase, but if our numbers, I guess that's what I would want to see, is the numbers comparing comparative cost for the police station, not overall cost for the police station and just building cost for the senior center. Because I think the overall cost for the senior center are the one point two plus the five point two, whatever the numbers are, so you're looking at six point four. So if you're looking at overall cost for police and overall cost for senior, just show me the numbers, I don't, I mean, I don't know the numbers, but if you want to get people's votes, I think you need to give them the justification on the cost. And not just, trust me because I'm doing the best I can, we want people to.
But you're asking for total cost. We don't know what the total cost is going to be. That's the problem they ran into with the police station. That's the problem that they're trying to avoid. The one point one, like you said, is to get the OPM, the, the architect, you know, the construction plans, all of that stuff, okay? Once we get that, and then they go out for bid for the, 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 the construction company to come in and build it, that's when we look, then they'll come back in November, December, to a special town meeting to tell them, okay, this is what is, this is what it's going to cost us to build, the building.
Yeah, and that's, so that part is what makes me feel better. But if you're going to present this stuff now, I think people want to see, I know I would want to see the comparative numbers.
What, what comparative numbers?
The cost per square foot of the police and the cost per square foot of this.
It's like apples and oranges, you can't compare what happened two years ago to what's going to happen in two years, because we don't know. No, I'm, I'm.
No, I'm assuming that you mean this is what you do.
I, I know, but I don't know enough, I guess.
You know the numbers you were just working out?
Yeah.
This can't work out.
Well, I don't know where
I was just, like, the number here is ten thousand, three hundred gross square feet.
Yeah.
That's for this building, the, and you're saying that the gross
One hundred thousand, five hundred fifty-five.
Is for the police station, and we're saying the police station is five and a half million.
Five point two million, it's five
Okay, five, five point two, I think five point five.
Well, this is five point, how much is this one, did you say?
Six point five.
Right.
So if you do
So it's an
Yes.
It's a hundred and thirty-one dollars a square
Yeah, that works out to six thirty-one, and the other one, police station was four seventy, that's a thirty percent, thirty-two percent increase.
Right, so cause it's inflation.
You said it was twelve percent.
Six percent Yeah, but the thing is, is that back then it was cheaper, you could get it for cheaper. Now, as time is going on and there's more construction going on, the cost of construction is going up.
But then
That's, okay, I don't know, it's getting late, I don't need to go any further, but I think those are the numbers
You can't go that fast, though, if it goes that fast, then like, ten years ago, it would just click what the cost is like forty-seven dollars.
Then we're getting, we're getting an amazing deal on, these estate prices have gone up thirteen
That's what I mean!
That's why it doesn't make sense to me, but I'm not, we're not gonna get an answer here. It's something that, it's gonna go to town meeting and we'll see what flies, but that's, that's my hesitancy.
I hope we don't
I would recommend it, it's a nice proposal.
Okay, the motion on the floor is to endorse the senior center with more specifics.
All the same
I don't know what you wanna say.
No, either you know, you say yes or no, that's all, you know, it's all, there is, they will be presented. So if you endorse, if the planning board endorse, the planning board has the right to ask questions at the meeting.
Oh, but don't endorse, we can't ask questions?
No, you can
You can ask either way, right.
You can ask anything you want, the planning board is endorsing, but the planning board would like to know this, this, this.
Or you could make conditions on your direction.
But we say that we endorse the idea of having a town senior center.
The others say no. The others say no, and we are not endorsing. Right, the cost is cost, cost is justified.
Then if we, then we're probably better off that we just say we didn't vote on it. The planning board didn't take
Most of this on the, most of this on the floor.
Well, you can take back the motion.
But I mean, the, the, I, I'm, I would not reject a senior center based on cost. What doesn't make sense is this cost. I mean, it, it doesn't make sense to me that the, the cost is, first of all, that much more than the police station based on complexity, and then that much more than the police station based on two years later. But it just, I mean, it's
But I, I grant it, it could be, these numbers may be true, because I don't know the costs of police station versus senior center, but I hope somebody has done that and is looking at it, but we should have that justification if they want us to vote for it as a town. There should be that in front of us, so we can say, oh yeah, that makes sense, because it's a really great grill that they're gonna have at the senior center, and it's way more expensive than that communications center that isn't in the police station, now it's located over in Holden. There could be justification, I haven't seen it, that's my, that's my real issue. I like the idea, the areas, I'm assuming that the FISB has worked hard on it and has done their background and worked it out, but it seems awful expensive, given that we just paid five-two for a police station.
Even if it goes to town meeting and gets disapproved, it's still gonna be on the ballot June sixth, okay? If it gets approved, if the money gets approved on June sixth, then they're gonna not have another special town meeting to get the two thirds vote.
Okay, what happens then?
Huh?
Do it pass at the ballot box last time?
What, what
It has to pass the vote plate, now if it passes at town meeting, but doesn't pass at this election, then you have to have another special election.
Or not.
So, there's three, four, five thousand dollars, for every time there's a special, either a special town meeting or a special election.
Yeah, but the point is, is that we've done this all before, we did this all for the first senior center.
Right, it shouldn't, I mean, it should have everything pulled up front, I mean, costs or not?
I, I'm not even, I don't even care about the cost, I just want it to be, make sense, I mean, I care about the cost, but it's, it's just like, there's no reason to think that this is gonna pass, when the, we don't understand why the last one didn't pass, except for some high tension wires and a hill in the driveway.
I mean, what's From what I understand, the building was not adequate, it needed more work than it was, than it was, than it wasn't cost effective, from my understanding, okay? And the thing, but here's the thing, okay, don't approve it, if it doesn't get approved, and then two years later, or a year later from now, they come back with it, and now it's gonna cost ten million dollars to build it, the same-sized building, then you're gonna look back and say, oh, maybe we should have approved it two years ago. You know, maybe look at that way, because the cost, the cost is gonna keep
And I'm saying, maybe we should have bought the church and renovated crap out of it to make it what we wanted back then. I mean, if we spent five and a half million, maybe six years ago, doing that, we would have had the Raj Mahal. You know? I mean, we could have doubled the size of the thing, we spent a million dollars on the property, another million to build it again, I mean
Yeah, do you know what is Taj Mahal is?
It's the Trump thing, right?
No. It's Shalhianan, build it, yeah, build, no, this is Raj Mahal.
That's, that's
It's one of the So after I'm dead, somebody will be building a building on top of them, that's called the Raj Mahal.
Raj Mahal.
Don't kill me, okay?
No, but I'm just, I, I think we don't understand, well, I don't understand why it didn't pass last time, and we seem to be doing the same thing again, and I don't understand why we think it's better, or different, which is fine, we can do it all again, but no.
Just remember this, the seniors in this town would support the town mostly. I mean, if it wasn't for the seniors going to town meeting, you'd never have a quorum.
I voted for the church.
I understand that, but I'm just saying, so if this doesn't get approved, then maybe the seniors won't support the town as much as they have been, and then the town's really gonna be, because none of these young people are going out to vote, I mean, you look at town meeting, what do you get? Hundred twenty-five, maybe hundred fifty people, and I would guarantee you that seventy-five to eighty-five percent of those are seniors. Okay, and if they don't show up for the town meeting, then you don't have a quorum, and come May, if you don't have a quorum, you don't have, you can't approve a budget, then the town doesn't run, just like the government doesn't run. So, you know, I mean, you know, the seniors don't ask for a lot in the town, you know, and they support, and besides that, when they were going after this building, it was adamant, the board of selectmen were adamant, not, no offense, Roger, the board of selectmen were adamant, yes, we will build it, we will build the senior center, senior center, senior center.
It came with the warrant, I voted that warrant, and then when it didn't, the seniors didn't
The thing is, that didn't work out, it doesn't matter, you vote how you want in, in, on May fifteenth, okay? But just remember, if it doesn't get approved, and two years from now, when it's gonna cost ten million dollars to build the same-sized building, then you'll speak about two years back and say
Why don't the seniors say, why didn't you take the church, because it was a million dollars then, now it's six million, and I voted for the church, thank you. I think that's about it.
Right, alright, so what do we wanna do here?
No, I, I, you know, for me, personally, I do support the seniors again.
Right!
Mark said, you know, I don't care about that, it's forty cents per day.
Would folks be in favor?
Forty cents tax increase per day, you know, can you
Well, every day I go to my friend's, it's a dollar six for my coffee, and we can bring that to forty cents.
Do you get almost, we cut the coffee?
Yeah.
At the senior center?
No, at, not at
But that's the
Joy low!
I know, I'm just saying.
How you can go to the senior center and get your coffee?
The open road, is it drive thru?
Yes, that could
Well, what would you just be, so would the board, I mean, is the board in favor of endorsing the project while noting a number of these concerns? Or do we think that's too strong?
I think, you know, the moderator asked whether any other board endorses. So we should be able to, the planning board should stand up, may the mark, I have to mark.
But then you say it's like, it's like, it's like a
Yes, no, it will, it will affect something. So yes, the planning board endorses, but I do have a couple of questions, that's okay. But, planning board endorses based on these conditions, that, rather than, I would say, no, we don't endorse.
We can't condition
He cannot condition on the law, it looks, it looks awkward out there, you know.
Do you think we endorse it, but it's awkward?
Like the last time, you know, you become the moderator.
I'll do that. I think it was the
No. No.
So what if we endorse it and then note that however, we do have some, you know, concerns or, or questions?
So, you, you can say that, no, 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 no. This is the way, no, this is not a condition, the planning board endorses, but, the planning board endorses the senior center project.
I think we have to put it in the language. The senior, the planning board endorses the senior center project, or the senior center, a senior center town, and then it's ambiguous enough that we can get out of it.
Yeah, that's it.
Yeah, I mean, it's possible between now and next week, they come up with the numbers that actually make sense. I mean, make, make it clear, right, it's not, not that it doesn't make sense, but make it clear that what our questions are, that they're real, that they're going to do a design for the whole site, they're gonna be coming, I mean, they're required anyway under the regulations to come to the planning board for site plan review, but it's
No, the numbers are the planning board for site plan review.
But, part, part of that is the whole site, so it will be included, I mean, when they did the police station, the site development was part of it, it has
Does it cost more than you
No, it's all included, it's, when you do something, that's what you do. You have to make sure that the sewer, the water, the traffic, the parking, everything is there.
Yeah.
So it's not anything fancy, but come
So the, the site is, I mean, so you are talking about the, is it thirteen point seven?
Thirteen seven.
Thirteen point seven, for the site, yeah, including the wetlands?
There's two acres of wetlands, maybe. We've had these WPI students look at it, it's just that a little bit where the path goes down to, uh, Horseshoe Drive, is a little bit of wetlands off to the right, but it's not even really connected to anything, so there's a question from the COMCOM at the time whether it was even jurisdictional wetlands, so
There are lands out there, yeah.
Yeah. So it's not a big portion, and you just mark those wetlands and you don't do anything there, that is pretty easy site plan. Stay away.
I guess the site plan is, whatever, included, but any other site work besides around the building will cost money.
Cost, site work will cost
Site, yes, but if you're taking, you're gonna do some work here, you're gonna put building here and parking lot here, you can't pile the dirt where you're gonna put the building, so you take the dirt, you move it over to there. If you've got the big trucks and machines out there, you level it off, you make it nice and flat, then you can use it as a field, or if it's the good material, you have extra loam or whatever it might be, you take that down to the existing field, because it needs loam, or it needs flattening, or it needs whatever it might need, you move it once when it's on the truck, instead of driving the truck over to here and dumping it, you drive the truck a hundred and fifty feet more and dump it in another area, and you spread that out, you've got the machines out there now, yeah, it's gonna cost you a little bit more, but you're gonna get the whole benefit of the other use, you're also gonna get the support from the T-ball kids, their families, the soccer kids, their families, the football training kids, everyone that goes out there and practices on those fields, the local neighborhood is gonna wanna use those fields, because they'll go out and play on them. Now, we've got poison ivy growing up and all over the place, well, actually, I think they killed all that along the street, but people use the fields, but
So you're talking about this area?
The front area, the side, I'm not sure where you're proposing to put the building, I mean, it seems like it's off up in the corner. I, yeah, it's on here, I see a plan of a building off on the east side, but
North.
It's here.
Yeah.
The building will be here, the parking lot is here, the building is oriented, is here.
Yeah.
It's the same as the old school.
Right, well, yeah.
But the, they put the building
They twisted the building, yeah, yeah, which makes sense.
Because of the
Exactly, that's, so that's fine, and doing all that is good, but they're gonna hopefully come up with a site plan to get the water up, to get the electric up, to get all that, so that's all part of the site plan anyway, so it's not this huge
No, but you're asking to do more work on the site, that could potentially cost more, even a hundred thousand, two hundred thousand, right? Right?
Probably not a hundred thousand.
And the love of this area, the love of this area, and again, you need to make the field, make the field for them, make the parking for them.
But not a turf field.
The parking's already
Yeah, yeah, but if you level it, when you level it, the parking is gone, right?
No, right now it's, it's, the parking is so long, the field is just
Yeah, I mean, I haven't seen the place.
So, but that's, someone who's the designer looks at that and lays it out.
Yeah.
And if there's an option to put a playground out there, that doesn't take much space, there used to be a playground in the back of Victor Building.
Where, where
On the, wherever it is, on the northwest
Yeah.
It's all simple.
Uh, driveway will be bad, because, you know, the people, traffic will go there, right? So this is the driveway goes to the senior center.
It's all good.
And this comes back like this, so it's, the driveway should be paved.
Right, you're gonna, you're gonna need to do site plan, you're gonna need to do drainage caps
Yes, site plan will be different, yes, because of the parking, number of parkings.
Yeah, in a building, non-residential building, so that's required. So I don't know what, it's, it, yeah, it's probably
So that's a good, that's a good, a good place, and, you know, you can always send it to the board. You know, when it, it's a, it's a preliminary plan again, you know, more than it's a conceptual plan.
Yeah.
They could change the, if necessary, the plan could alter.
Is there motion of, for?
Yes.
I think there's
Well, there was one to endorse the, where, I don't know, endorse the idea of the senior center, first of all, you have it anywhere in town, and you've changed it to with more specifics.
To not upper.
Right, not to upper.
What are your thoughts, Chris? I haven't heard anything, you just
Um, yeah, I mean, I, I would like, you know, see some of this additional information that you and Mark are bringing up, however, overall, I would say, at this point, I endorse the plan, there may be some more information that I might like to see.
So who, you know, who is going to endorse, and who is standing up for the
Chair.
So, they can ask the questions.
The chair.
Chair does, okay.
That's fine. I usually just
No, you're a bit of a moderator as well, like
What, no, when they say, do you recommend approval, it's like the planning board recommends approval, and you don't have to stand up and make any presentation, it's just okay, you sit in that seat.
I mean, you know, you could ask, the planning board could ask questions too.
Oh, members can ask any question you want, yeah.
That's it, that time you can ask. It, my, my, my thing is, you know, either we approve, or don't do anything.
I agree.
Or deny.
No, I don't
Or
I don't know that we wanna deny it, it's either we recommend
Recommend that, recommend, recommend that
I can give a statement, I think, as well.
Right, but I mean, because the thing that I like is that we're doing, in the first phase, is the million dollars for the design, which can reduce the cost in the future, if it's needed, if it's not justified. So whether it's four hundred and fifty dollars square, or three fifty, or whatever it might be.
Six thirty.
The numbers should make sense at the next time they're, we're actually asked to pay for this.
Oh, after this part, after the designer's done.
That's it, that is.
I agree.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, but then why do we talk about the five one four?
That is an estimate.
Because they base the one point two off ten percent, or whatever it was, off the five one four.
So this is, this includes hiring an architect, and he will be, I would say, like, seven, seven, he's done. So hiring an architect is based on the cost of construction.
Oh, okay.
So, when we get that conceptual plan, the, the architect also make an estimate of the total cost of construction, as well as total cost of the project.
Which is what they do.
Based on, yes, based on the architect's estimate, this is the figure.
Right now.
The total figure is, total cost of the project is this much. From out of this, there is another area of the breakdowns, within, not in here, there is, with the breakdown, cost of construction is there. Cost of construction status in some rules or regulations for that, I think, you know, for any public buildings, it's eight percent of the cost of construction will be the architect fee. Maybe it's two hundred million, that, I think, you know, police station is like three point two, something, that's why, no, four billion.
You said six percent?
Cost of construction is, I said it's four, eight point eight percent of the thirty-two thousand dollars. Earlier, it was two million or something, that time it was based on that, it's like that, but when the cost increases, the architects are cost of construction increased, my architect fee is more, he came up and asked. So that's based, the architect fee is fixed by the state, and
Is ratio.
Ratio, percentage, percentage of cost of construction.
Right, so that's why, I mean, I'm assuming that the FISB is watching to make sure they don't jack the fees up, or jack the price up, so that their fees don't go up. I mean, it's one of the things that we need to, and I think they're on top of it, I mean
So again, you know, based on the one point one million, whatever the remainder will go back to the uh, cost of the project, the main, the project, construction, and also in that one point one million And also, in that one point one million, uh, it's for the architect, and he will be working on the plans, and even by the time the bid ready documents, he might have done for like seventy percent of the project. So then he will be continuing to be working with that same money, entire project. And the OPM, whatever he does, that's proportion he get paid. But whatever the work he does, say, suppose, until the, uh, uh, bid ready document.
Yeah.
If the OPM is needed, only that much he pays. Even though his fee is like a two hundred thousand, three hundred thousand, he's not gonna get paid the entire amount.
And they always add the OPM to the whole project.
Whole project, if it is approved at the phase three. If the phase three is not approved, then you won't be getting enough.
Oh, okay, so if we stop the project.
That, that money is not wasted.
And so all town meetings asking for on Monday is.
One point one million, the phase two, get the, to hire an architect, to hire an OPM, uh, and then get the bid ready documents. Go out, get the bids, and then open the bids, and then see how much the bid is. Then with that money, the fix money will go to the committee again, ask for the remainder of the money. Then only restart the construction.
So we will see them before that all occurs, 'cause site plan review is gonna have to go before the bid documents.
Yeah, everything has to come before, uh, the planning board and other boards.
Before the bid documents?
Before the bid documents.
Is that's part of, I mean, if we change some of the designing, some.
So the bid is only construction?
Bid is only, what is that, construction?
It's only construction. The architect is gonna get a full site plan complete?
Yes, complete, complete, complete things.
So when they do that, that's the stuff we need to make sure FISB's aware.
The architect will do about seventy percent of the work, everything, bid ready, bid ready is seventy percent or hundred percent. I don't know, the architect work.
No, there's gotta be some contingency, just in case he's gonna do some homework.
Yeah, contingency will be always there.
Yeah.
So if the building contingency is set aside, so it could be the architect, it could be some other things running to, so we do need to have a contingency, contingency.
Under construction as well as.
Yeah.
Including on, on the engineers.
One of the contingency.
No, the designer is eighty percent, including contingencies.
There is one, the one of contingency, and the other one is some kind of conception contingency, or something like that, that are good things like that.
That's what we can let, that's all the details, there's a lot of details in there, but the big point is that they get all this stuff ready, they, they hear what. I would like them to make sure that they hear the concerns of getting things in, and looking for grants, and looking for all this other stuff, so that we can keep the cost down.
So again, you know, the grants, we cannot do anything until.
No, no, we're not gonna say we're.
But I would not say that during the meeting, I wouldn't, I wouldn't approve grants during the meeting.
No, 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 a lot of people will be asking grants.
Yeah, and you have to say they do.
No, no, we need to have the conceptual, uh, bid ready documents, town approved architect plan. If not town approved architect plan, we cannot apply for a grant, nobody will believe it, nobody wants to hear it.
But I would, I would just talk about it as if applying for grants is like applying for the construction estimate, you know, it's as important.
So we do, we, you know, town, the board, they do want to pay for a grant, and also, you know, we need to know, you know, we need, again, how many grants are out there, how much we can able to get, those are all, you know.
Well, that's, we shouldn't rely on the volunteer grant, we should have a professional grant.
That's every, you know, that, uh, that can be, you know, sent to the FISB board, okay? This is the planning board suggestion.
Is there a motion? Still a motion?
Still a motion.
To recommend approval or to recommend.
Endorse. Endorse.
It does.
I think that's what the deal was asking.
So we want to say.
Just gonna ask.
Okay, so the, the motion will be, the.
We're making, I thought we were making a recommendation on a warrant article. It's a warrant article, so we recommend approval of recommended.
Oh, okay, so approval of the article.
'Cause it's not ours, we're not endorsing or anything.
Should we recommend?
Approval.
Whatever. Yeah, the idea, you know. Recommend approval, yeah.
Of the article, or, do you want to say, or the senior center?
Of the Raj Mahal. R A J.
Article.
M A H A.
I've been approval of the article.
Yes. Can we know what number article is?
Number four.
Number, uh.
Four or five? I know they moved it up in just like fifteen at one time. Is there a second? The motion. The motion.
Second.
A second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Proposed. General. Four, four's a. Look at that, and it was anonymous.
See? All right. Reports from the boards. Nothing from you, nothing from me.
Formal housing trust man.
Oh, we did get email, but that was very helpful, by the way, with the, the files.
Yeah. That was half the meeting.
I never even looked at it. It's, it's, it's there in the words.
It was the formal housing trust, we reviewed the letter, and, um, we're going forward with the lottery for, uh. We're concerned about the lottery for the, um, Oak, Oak, no, yeah, the new, uh, uh, lead project. We wanna get the local preference people, we wanna get a list started for that, like, well.
Yeah.
So that's, that's our idea, there was, there was other things going on, but those are the two things that are on. Anything else?
That's seven percent.
Yeah, that's okay, but now we need the list, so we can say, this is the people, we're not only the, like, fifteen times.
And the other, I mean, where you're into about.
So I have, you know, several information sessions.
Yeah.
Oh, transportation, transportation, just met a couple of times, um, on complete streets, do you wanna talk about?
No, okay.
Complete streets is moving along where, sit, well, whatever, they said they're seventy percent along with, uh, where it's phase, I think it's the phase two of complete streets.
Good.
Which is, yeah.
Prioritization plan?
Yep.
Excellent.
The prioritization idea is that within, I think it's two miles or a mile of the school is a priority. Turnover.
Turnover.
Look at the map.
All of that.
That's the priorities, and, and it's kind, they're kind of color-coded to the legend on the other side.
So this is in a.
No, to the other, the, the, the priority.
The transportation board, as soon as the C M R P says, you know, the, they, they came up with a bunch of projects.
To the, the cars of the road that are.
Good.
Good.
Bunch of projects is good.
Twenty-eight projects, and list them, and we need to, we need these and all the things to be done. Uh, after that, we give a priority based on the severity of the need, need or severity of the.
In the, some prior.
Scope of the project, and then, you know, it will go to the funding. Once we get the funding, we, we don't have to go in the same order, because we could, we could, we could roam changing it.
It sounds like this is just the, the order, whatever you're talking about for funding.
Type three is the one we have to give a more elaborate explanation for each project, and what you want to do.
That's, that's.
So we are planning.
That's not just funding.
So the good thing is, you know, we are planning to put in a sidewalk, uh, up on Newton Street. From Prospect to, uh, Goodell Street, and then Newton.
And then down to here, good.
On the right hand side, it goes through the.
Right hand side, you want to help?
Yeah, the hill, the right hand side, it goes through the, that side of the.
Through the inside.
That's fine.
You'll get the left sidewalk, and also the town is.
We need it on one, yeah.
And also, you know, I don't know whether it's the charter money is coming up, there was the last year, they, I think, you know, la, next meeting. Uh, the, so a D P W director, next collect, D P W director will be talking, I don't know what idea he has there. So there are the, the sewers, what is it, blading, blading, steady, and then they have to spend a lot of on that road.
The only paving was gonna of a road, it was gonna be Newton Street, with all the repairs.
It's a lot of.
For this year.
Down lower or up or?
Upper lower, you're right, you're right.
Are they, were they gonna do some parking changes down by the library?
Lower Newton, uh, all the parking on the other side.
Away from.
Will be taken away, and then put it towards the, put it towards the library side.
Not both?
No, not both. On the other side, it will become a, no parking, but there is a plan to put a sidewalk.
There is a sidewalk, with it, it has to be repaired, seriously.
Yeah, that's considered rule of the project law.
Good, that definitely.
It's considered the C M R, the complete street policy.
Absolutely, yeah.
So it's moving on, that was the good of transmission, transportation.
Good. So, but this, these, these things are not set, threatened storm, but.
No, this is just the, the transportation committee's idea.
Yeah.
C M R P C still has to finish writing the complete streets.
Yeah, so you are still taking input on those.
It still has to be go to the board of selectmen.
Yeah, uh, C M R P C is finalized in the document that will go to the selectman program board.
Do they have a sidewalk plan?
Yeah, they, they set up sidewalk.
No, a sidewalk plan, 'cause there's an existing sidewalk plan that was prepared for the master plan, I think it was?
No.
And then they were gonna update it for the open space and red plan.
These are all like, you know, connecting, and some places are not there.
Oh, yeah, this is only connecting existing sidewalk systems.
Yeah.
Like the, there's sidewalks here and there, that kind of end for no good reason, and most of this plan is to connect all those little partial sidewalks.
So like here, you know.
Yeah, and I think that idea is good, but what we've had in the past, we have, the town has a sidewalk plan. We need to update that if we're gonna be doing this.
So the, the good thing is for us, you know, we have, the planning board is talking for a long, long time, before my time, the Franklin Street, Clamie. So there will be a one, uh, is it a?
Right here?
Signal.
Signal. I don't know.
Oh, they're, they're not talking the signal, they're talking, it's a, like a flashing.
Flashing yellow.
Tiger or something, I figured what they call it.
Yeah, yeah, of course, you, you trigger it, and you go.
Yeah.
It doesn't necessarily put a red light for the traffic, but it flashes saying that there's something crossing.
And also from the Franklin to one forty, I think sidewalk, that's one.
Oh, right out here?
Yeah, that's what that, uh.
Oh, there is a sidewalk, there is a sidewalk.
No, in front of like the pool place and the gas station, they put a sidewalk down that side of the street.
That'll pave.
Two sidewalks, one on each side of the street?
I think so.
That is the bad in Moscow, that's what I'm.
There's not a way to put that side one.
They talked about changing the, oh, no, that's a different, that's not sidewalk, it's not complete streets. But have they made any progress about doing something about maybe making Franklin Street a one-way, or evaluating the whole trying?
It doesn't concern the complete street policy.
I haven't talked about it in the transportation.
That's transportation, that's what I'm.
Yeah, but it, we talked about only the complete street policy today.
And the master, the same thing we're doing, transportation has to do one?
Yep, transportation.
And that's on, on one of our goals.
Good. All right.
Okay. Chair.
Minutes.
I guess.
No, move on, recreational marijuana?
No.
Well, not for this time, maybe.
Not for me anymore, right, but.
Well, I, I didn't, no, I read, I read an email saying the board of selectmen was going to.
Next week.
Put together what they have to, to, to request that we pull that together. I think that was.
All right, so I wasn't.
There's a lady coming from, uh, Woodstable Public Council.
You sure we're gonna do this?
Next week, the speaker, Andy.
Yeah.
So you're the board of health and selectmen.
Police station update.
So I can be.
Captain DeLac, any greetings?
All right, real quick, uh, there was an update email earlier today from Tony DiRusio at the police station. This has been a, uh, some kind of change to the drainage plan. Says, ensure we're replacing the C N P that currently exists onto the access road, enlarging the detention basin, adding, adding a gate valve to the state drainage connection. An emergency will allow first responders to close the gate valve, preventing spilled explosion to the town's drain areas. Uh, and he's asking, can we just, you know, record this in the ASG, or, uh, or do they need to submit an amended, uh, site plan for this kind of a change? Or, or he says they're simply just coming for the board in the future, and, you know. At least have them come before and explain it, 'cause I don't really understand what it's. Okay. I'm happy to ask, uh, to see if, uh, if he or somebody else could just come for the board and explain.
Well, the offers, what's the change? Simple present the change as an upcoming planning board.
Exactly.
We should just ask for that.
So why don't we start there? No metal guardrail?
Apparently, it's all, yeah, through D O T.
It's approved, D O T.
But that.
No, the metal guardrail is up, goes up on this top here. Yeah. All right, so I'll follow through, I'll put in on that, um.
And what we're gonna do about you?
We, we did get, like I said, this is good feedback from A H T, the files, we can consider that going forward. There was a letter here to, um, Selecting Bruto from FEMA, Department of Homeland Security.
What? Did I get that?
A discovery meeting from National Watershed.
No, you're not.
Risk map program. This is just an F Y I, presumably? Download a copy of the report on the website. If your community's listed in table one and you'd like to discuss the proposed modeling, please contact Project Manager, Midwest, the N W A. Are we in table one? I see.
It's everyone.
Yeah, no.
We're, uh.
And it writes, and it's a. It's flood insurance, but.
Yeah, I don't see what's, what's in the, in communities. Restaurant's been high, closest one is Clinton. I think Clinton's gonna be flooded.
All right, fair enough, fair, meeting minutes for the.
April twenty-sixth?
For April twenty-sixth, can we do the regular meeting minutes?
Sure. Do a change?
I do that.
Motion to approve meeting minutes, April twenty-sixth, the regular meeting minutes for April twenty-sixth, twenty-seventeen?
So second? Two seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, a motion to.
Well, I, I actually didn't get a chance to read the public camera minutes, can we put that off until next time?
Sure.
How about June sixth?
Yeah, you have to hurry, you don't seem to have any chance.
This is a show. All right, anything else?
No. Oh, bells?
Bells.
Oh, okay, that's gotta be it.
Is that for a second? You do?
No, no bells, is there a motion to adjourn?
No, you have bells.[1792.32]